Welcome, everybody. I'm Mayor Mark Lammon, and again, I'd like to welcome everyone, both in the audience, as well as those online and those who will be watching this later off the recording, as we call to order this joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, January 23rd, 2018. I'd like to next introduce the council, as well as the staff that are here to service and help us all tonight. And I'm going to begin to my left with Vice Mayor John Deloasso, Councilmember Susan Hardy, and over to my right with Councilmember Wendy Skilman and Councilmember John Moore. And looking right over here to the staff table, right in the center, we have City Manager Damien O'Bid, to his left, City Attorney Robin Donahue, welcome. Our Police Chief, Michael Parrish, right next to him. And in front with the staff, we have Community Development Director Vicki Parker, City Engineer and Director of Public Works Craig Scott, hello Craig. And last but not least, in the front row there, we have our Administrative Service Director, Norm Veloso, hello. And right over here at the Command Center, we have our Deputy City Clerk Lauren Burgess. So, welcome in everyone. And with that, I will ask the Deputy City Clerk for roll call, please.
Councilmember Skilman?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Mayor Lammon?
Here.
Vice Mayor Deloasso?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
All right, thank you for that. And now, we're to the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to ask Kattati's newest police officer, Officer Mohammed Hamadi, to stand up, come in front, and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are to Item 4, and this is Approval of Minutes and Notice of Waiving of Reading of All Resolutions and Ordinances Introduced and/or Adopted Under This Agenda, which is an action item. Do I have anybody who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, I'm going to see if I have a motion.
So moved.
Second. All right, all is in favor, say, please say aye.
Aye.
And Mayor, I will actually abstain since I wasn't here at the meeting that day.
Yeah, very good. So, that motion carries with four ayes and one abstention. And we are to announcements. I'll begin. There's a lot to read, so it'll be easier to do it this way. And I'd like to start with a meeting orientation for new attendees or new viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the City Council will consider the item, and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place in the agenda where citizens have the right to say whichever they wish. The council may, or may not, choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to, or agreeing with, any statements that the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Next, the City of Council, Kattati, has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall. This is part of its Kattati Open for Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati businesses, and those interested in starting a new business in the city, something we always like to see. The Ronard Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For information, please call the library at (584) 9121, or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, and Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, and by appointment as well. For more information or for appointments, call (707) 794-0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com, and I will spell that, N-I-X-L-E dot com. And we have a few events coming up. Once again, we're going to invite you to join the Kattati Police Department, which is pretty much all here right now, at Starbucks located at 640 East Kattati Avenue for Coffee with a Cop. And this is tomorrow morning, January 24th, 2018, at 7:00 AM. So, this would be a good time to catch up and get caffeinated together. Another event, the City of Kattati is hosting a Sweethearts Fairy Tale Dance on Saturday, February 10th, 2018. And this will be a fun event for children ages 3 to 12, and their favorite adult chaperone to dance to music, make arts, crafts, and enjoy some light refreshments. If you're interested, contact the Recreation Department at (665) 4222, or you can get ahold of Ashley Wilson at AWilson, A-W-I-L-S-O-N, at kattatacy.org for more information. And of course, the city offers a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and more details can be found at the web at kattatacy.org. So, with that, we are to Item 6, which is our honorary mayor, Annabelle Dane of Lawrence E. Jones Middle School. I'm going to welcome you back, Annabelle. Now, you got to do this last week, you got a few more people this week, but you've done us, it's easy to do so. Come on up and say hi, and tell us, tell us how things are going in the community and what you have to share with us.
Hi. Things are going, you know, good. I talked to some friends about things that they'd like to see in this city, you know. And, yeah, I wrote up a little paper here that is very speech-like, and so I will now read it. What I value and think is very important for the future of any community is what our newest generation's impressions of the world are. I'm talking more specifically about teaching kids in elementary school about the diverse communities of the world, and teaching them to be accepting and friendly. I'm aware that in the case of race and gender, schools seem to already be introducing children to ideas of making peace with people who are different. But we can do more with other topics as well, such as issues of the LGBT+ community. I didn't know homosexuality even existed until I was almost out of elementary school, and I was confused and thought it was weird at the time. Students can have negative first impressions if they're never taught about it in a positive way. This is also the case with mental illnesses like depression or anxiety. Kids who develop mental disorders are misunderstood and judged because their peers haven't learned about the kind of things they're going through. I think we should have some days at school where kids learn about things that aren't well-covered in their system. If kids are introduced to these topics by supportive people who tell them to treat all people as people and nothing less, they can have this mindset throughout their life. This can prevent conflict where students don't understand each other, and can help our new rising generation be more positive and compassionate overall. Thank you.
Thank you very much, that's nice. So, I'm going to ask you to wait, and you know what, that's fine, yes indeed.[524.16][524.16](APPLAUSE). So, you've done very well, but I can't let you off the hook that easy. I'm going to see if any of my colleagues have any questions for you, and I'm going to start to my left down here with Councilmember Harvey.
That was really very impressive, Annabelle. I guess what struck me the most from all of that is really at the heart of what you said, and that's to treat people as people. And I think that is so simple and so basic, but so true. So, I really appreciate you sharing that insight with us, and that's pretty good for someone of your age. And I hope that you can bring that into the future and help others be a little bit more open. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Deloasso.
Wow, let's start with that. Annabelle, that was really insightful, regardless of anybody's age, you know, to pull out important issues certainly that are going on everywhere in the world today about diversity, mental illness. I think it's really amazing that, you know, you're bringing up the point about, to me it was sort of, the theme that I picked up was about understanding and acceptance, and it's very broad terminology, but that was really, really, really good. So, I gave you that homework assignment two weeks ago, I mean, you blew it out of the water. So, thank you, that was great.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Skilman.
Well, hi, I didn't get to meet you last meeting, and I read the article about you in the Community Voice, and it's really great to see you in person and to hear what you have to say. So, thank you very much for sharing your thoughts with us. I really like the idea too about what you said, how these messages need to get given to children in a really positive way, so that they, it's always those things that you don't know about, or you don't understand, that you fear, and so it's great to have that idea of talking to kids about all kinds of different things and make them feel okay about asking questions, and so I think that's a really great idea. So, thank you for sharing your thoughts with us tonight, I'm really impressed with you.
Of course, thank you.
Councilmember Moore.
Annabelle, I think that was terrific. When you look at the polarization that we have in so many regions and different parts of the country, to have the upside of that is that now you have a greater recognition of some of the diversity and some of the situations other people may be in, so I think that's fantastic. And out of the worst, we have hopefully a wonderful learning opportunity, so I think that was terrific.
Thank you.
I can continue to follow that.
I will.
And I think I'll just wrap up by saying you make such a good point, that there's a lot of things in learning, but it's more certainly than just numbers or history, dry figures, it's also learning how we all work as people and how we hopefully can work together. That's a key point and an important thing to start learning, so I appreciate that message. And I wonder if you brought some folks, I think, with you, if you'd like to introduce who's with you here tonight.
Yeah, there's my mom, my sister, and my dad over here.
Wonderful. if you want, but since it's a school night, you have full permission to take off too. Well, I have a very nice proclamation for you. Thank you very much for being honorary mayor this month. I wonder if you'd like to invite your family up, and perhaps we can all get a picture Cheers.[732.82][732.82](APPLAUSE). All right, and we are on to Item 7, which is a proclamation. together with you in this nice proclamation.
Okay.
Please. (INAUDIBLE) Got a couple there, so. And I will ask you to bear with me, it is a slightly two-sided proclamation, but I think it's a good one and well worth reading. And this is a proclamation of the City Council, the City of Kattati recognizing the 100th anniversary of Santa Rosa Junior College. That's a pretty impressive anniversary. So, whereas, Sonoma County Junior College District, well-known as Santa Rosa Junior College, is celebrating its 100th anniversary in January 2018, and in recognition of its role in promoting educational opportunity, academic excellence, economic vitality, social equity, and community advancement throughout the North Bay region, and whereas, Santa Rosa Junior College was originally conceived in November 1917 by the Federated Home and School Association, an organization of prominent Santa Rosa women who cherish the ethos of locally-based higher education. And whereas, Santa Rosa Junior College was chartered in California, enrolling 19 students in its first semester, spring 1918, and eventually growing to include all high school districts located in Sonoma County and parts of Marin and Mendocino Counties by July 1963, in over its 100 years serving over, wow, 1,700,000 individuals, preparing each one for regional, national, and global leadership. And whereas, Santa Rosa Junior College has established a comprehensive campuses in Santa Rosa and Petaluma, along with a Public Safety Training Center in Windsor, the 365 Schoen Farm in Forestville, the Southwest Santa Rosa Center in Roslyn, classroom-based instruction throughout the district, and an online program that serves students from throughout the region and beyond. And whereas, having established a legacy of excellence during a century of service, Santa Rosa Junior College has established academic, career, technical education, athletic and performing arts programs that have consistently garnered state, national, and worldwide attention, bringing honor to the college and the community. And whereas, it is the adopted vision that Santa Rosa Junior College aspires to be an inclusive, diverse, and sustainable learning community that engages the whole person, a statement that generally reflects the legacy of its imprint on the entire North Bay region, a vision guarded vigorously throughout the test of time. And whereas, the distribution of funds to support students and educational programs is earned the SRJC Foundation the number-one ranking among all California community colleges and recognition amongst the top in the nation. Whereas, the Santa Rosa Junior College Student Services and the Frank P. Doyle and Paulio Mira Doyle scholarships are acknowledged as among the finest in a Californian community college system. And whereas, the faculty, staff, administrators, and student leaders have vowed to ensure collegiality and harmony in order to cultivate creativity, respect, health, and the inherent richness of a multicultural community. And now, therefore be it proclaimed, on this 23rd day of January 2018, that the City Council of the City of Kattati hereby recognizes the 100th anniversary of Santa Rosa Junior College, and hereby commends this institution for its historic contributions to the people of this community. And I believe we have a couple of people from, to join us, that we have trustees president, SRJC Board of Trustees President Maggie Fishman here to join us. Welcome, Maggie. Please step to the podium. Now, that was a lot of words from me, I'd rather hear a few from you, I think.
Well, Trustee Vattenfeld has the stomach flu, I'm sorry, she's not here. There's not much to add to that, you know, you went through the history, I'm glad that it was mentioned, it was started by four women who decided, let's start a college. And, you know, pretty exciting, but you went through the history nicely. One thing I would add is that our men's basketball team is doing fabulous right now. We just got a forensic, not a forensic, excuse me, the debate team got a state championship this last weekend. We're the third-largest employer in Sonoma County, a lot of people don't realize that, and you about covered the rest, and it's an honor to have the proclamation from the City of Kattati, and actually, sort of the reinforcement from all the cities in the county, because the JC's tentacles are big and long, and I'm just curious how many people in the audience have a connection with a junior college. The back row, I figured you guys would, yeah. Yeah, we're everywhere, we're everywhere.
Very good.
We are, so thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Appreciate it.
Before I bring this proclamation, I'm going to see if any of my colleagues have anything they wish to share, any comments? No, please.
No, I just wanted to say, my son goes to Santa Rosa High School, and I love the fact that he has the ability to take classes at the junior college concurrently while he's in the high school. So, I know some kids start to feel a little not challenged enough, I guess is the word for it, so it's fantastic that he has that opportunity to do that, so I appreciate that program. And then, my bonus daughter is now going to the Bridging to College program at the Petaluma Campus.
Oh, wonderful, yeah.
And so, that's been fantastic, because she had to...
Casa Grande, or Petaluma?
She's at the Petaluma Campus, yeah, the JC. So, I just have learned a lot about a lot of the local programs and opportunities that you're giving children, and I really appreciate that.
Well, our mission has expanded over the years, and there's, we've come up with some pretty creative ways to reach new people and program, CTE programs, but also to help students who are ready to go to college and high school is another, or re-entering. It's just, it's pretty fabulous, but then I'm biased. A graduate from 1971, I am.
Vice Mayor Deloasso.
Yes, thank you, Maggie, thank you for commuting up here.
Oh, yeah, it was tough. I live in Pen Grove.
Yeah. You know, I've had an affiliation with the JC for many years, I too went there, I don't think it was 100 years ago, but somewhere, somewhere in the timeframe anyway. I'm positive, thank you for the support and comments here. And I've been on the Natural Resource Advisory Committee for probably 15 or 20 years. I felt I sort of needed to give back to my early education, that I got at the JC and went on to UC Davis, and I have to say that at the time I was there, it was an incredibly tough junior college. The courses were not like, you know, you're out of high school, this will be a breeze, right? No, it wasn't that easy, so I was very impressed, and we meet only twice a year, this advisory committee, but I hear from, usually there's a representative of the dean's office there, and every time we have a meeting, we hear some ridiculous statistic about the JC, how it's, you know, the second-most whatever, whatever the superlative is of the time, you know, in the country for junior colleges and community colleges, it's really, it's a gem that we have, and people really should take advantage of it. And even at any age, there's plenty of courses that are offered up there that are still very appropriate, so thanks for coming here and representing.
Absolutely, thank you.
And I'll look one more time, any comments? Please.
Maggie, I just want to kind of reiterate what John said, I've, myself, my wife, and one of my children, and two of my existing children are going through the JC right now. And my oldest son, who went through there, went on to get his masters at Oxford, and he indicated that there were classes at the JC that were tougher than they were in the more upper-level education, so I think you guys do a tremendous job. Thank you so much.
I hear this a lot, and if you go through our bookstore or the online requirements for classes, and the books required, and the books required at other four-year universities for the freshmen and the sophomore, if you're on the transfer track, they're the same. You know, it's same quality, yeah. And I should mention, our nursing program is fabulous, as well as our public safety, you know, the whole thing, you know. I know, I could go on and on, you could put a nickel in me and you'd never have your meeting.
Well, I'm just amazed, I can see what the front-page story in the Community Voice is going to be. SRJC Board of Trustees President admits college has tentacles everywhere.[1273.83][1273.83](LAUGHTER). You heard it here first, folks, so, so with all the other fascinating, amazing things we learned about the college, that's good to know too. So, I have a very nice proclamation for you, I was curious, would you like to do a picture in front of the council of this?
I would.
Very good. Let's step down there for just a second.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, so, many people have... And then again, it's the higher education part, we can get this part.
Oh, okay, there we go.
All right, smile.
He was upside down, I'm just kidding.[1307.83][1307.83](LAUGHTER).
The front row's pretty funny.
Yeah, that was pretty good.
They're going to speak next.
And how many people noticed I actually believed that for a second?[1326.41][1326.41](LAUGHTER). Because I did. All right. And we are now to Item 8, which is a presentation, and this is swearing in of a new police officer, Mohammed Hamadi. So, with that, I believe we're going to have a presentation by Chief Parrish.
Yeah, I'm going to step in first, and then...
Very good, take it away.
Chief will take it from there, yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, I am very pleased to welcome Officer Mo Hamadi tonight. So, please come on up to the speaker's podium for an introduction and the swearing-in ceremony. And the chief will take it from here.
Good evening, Mayor, council, thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to introduce again Mohammed Hamadi. Apparently, he goes by Mo, so we'll just go with Mo, because I haven't seen anybody else call him Mohammed yet. So, Mo's family's from Lebanon, and Mo actually speaks Arabic, so that's our first and only officer that can do that, so that's different, so good for him, and maybe we could put that to work someday. His family went from Lebanon to Canada, and then eventually to Ronard Park, so Mo's been living in Ronard Park since he was three years old. He's got a big family, so he has four sisters, they're all here. One sister is his twin sister. Which one's that? The one hiding there? All right, not the one that said the camera was upside down, Mo? That was a... He comes from a smart family, a highly-educated family, we were just talking about education. Actually, his father's here, Ali, is a PhD, and he's a, has an engineering, and he's an electrical engineer. His, Mo's mother's here, Maha, and she's self-employed. Mo's a graduate of Rancho Kattati Pi, so he's a local guy here, and he's a auto mechanic by trade, that's what he's been doing, but not after tonight, right? Or to switch gears. We were just talking about these tentacles, right? So, he's a SRJC Police Academy graduate, so those tentacles, they are here. So, he went through a process to get hired by Kattati Police Department, we don't hire just anybody. We think he's a good fit for Kattati, that's why he's in front of you, and I think he's going to do well. I hope he listens to our honorary mayor and treats people like people, I hope he learned that lesson. And for everybody out there, let's hope that the first time you see Mo is at Coffee with a Cop and not here every mayor, so that's what I hope. So, having said that, I'm going to come up and I'm going to have Mo take the oath of office, please.
Please, ready? If you'd have to name, if I had to state your name?
I'm Mohammed Hamadi.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the Constitution, to the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the United States...
To the State of California?
The State of California.
You got this. That I will take this obligation freely?
That I will take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation?
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion?
And that I will well and faithfully?
And that I will well and faithfully?
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties?
Upon which I'm about to enter?
Upon which I'm about to enter.
(APPLAUSE).
Okay, that was the easy part.
Yeah.
So I'm going to look to my colleagues in the council, see if anybody has any questions for you, any comments? The vice mayor wants to jump right in. Shall we let him? Vice Mayor, please.
I've been writing notes down, frantic, waiting for this. So again, congratulations and welcome to Cataná. First things first, between you and your twin, who's older? Are you? Ah, okay. That's why she's quiet. Understood. And, you know, it's a question that's in everybody's mind. Everybody's afraid to ask it, but I'm going to go for it. I have to ask the chief this, though. Do we have a Larry and Curly? I'm just curious.
Can you put that in the budget?
Zing. Very nice. The answer is no to that. So, you know, I'll keep it brief. You know, you, clearly, your entire family is incredibly gifted in a lot of things, and you, I kept hearing all of these accolades coming out of the chiefs. The one thing I didn't hear is cooking. Can you cook?
A bowl of cereals?
Yeah, so that's a no. That's clearly a no. So we have community events, you know, he'll just be bringing, schlepping the ice. I think that's appropriate. Anyway, it's great to have you here in Cataná. I hope you stay here at least 30 to 40 years in the force, but great to have you here.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Harding?
Yes, welcome. And it's so nice that your family could be here with you to enjoy this swearing-in. And I look forward to seeing you out on the street, and not in my rear-view mirror. But do welcome, and we're glad you're here, and we're glad that you chose Cataná. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Welcome, Mo. I wish you a long and successful career. And it's nice that we have a bridge now in our Arabic and Lebanese communities. So welcome.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And Councilmember Skilman?
So again, welcome to Cataná, and thank you for adding to the safety and protection of our community. I also always am impressed by people who speak another language, because it's usually one more than almost every other American. So that's fantastic. And I was also going to make a joke, but I think we've had so many good jokes. I will fall flat if I try any of them. So I have done that swearing-in in a few places, but I've never had this many people watching me. So that was an excellent job, by the way.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I agree, no jokes. So you've gone through one of the more difficult things, because you've probably done oral boards before, where you've had to face people like this, but you've never done it with about 60 people looking at the back of your head.
No, sir.
Yes, indeed, that is different, isn't it? Yes, our honorary mayor figured that out last week. You get to figure it out this week. So Officer Hamadi, I just want to welcome you very sincerely to the city of Cataná. I hope you have a long and very happy career here, Mo. I think it's great. And I'm very pleased on a personal note, we get to share this important time. There's nothing that speaks more to me than these badge pinings. I've seen that many times with friends, with family members, and seeing it happen here in the community, and seeing how important it is to the family, as well as your new family of coworkers who are all here to celebrate this with you. It's an important thing, so congratulations to you. And with that, I wonder if we could have one more round of applause for the officer. I will point out, for the next 30 years, this is the friendliest the public will ever be. And I wonder, if you could tell me who you have here with you, if you'd like to have your family come up and get a picture first of all of you together here, and then, secondly, perhaps with the council along with you?
Absolutely.
I'll invite you all up here, then, please. And then we can go down after they get a family one. So get yourself a family one together. City Manager Obit will take it for you, and then we'll come join you. Give me bones. All right, smile. Good? Very good. Yeah. All right, let's take, hang on just a second. Your turn. And I think we can fit everybody on here.
What's mine?
We can do that.
No, I shouldn't.
Wish I'd known. I didn't care if it was a picture. Hey, which camera are we looking at? There we go, smile. Mr. Barrish?
Thank you, sir.
Would you like to speak?
Yes, sir.
This is not an action item, but since we've had quite a bit of back and forth, I'll allow it. Please.
Thank you, sir. For the benefit of the audience, my name is George Barrish. I'm a former city councilman here, and I'd also like to welcome Officer Mo to this, the city and our police department. I can only convey to you how challenging I can think that your new career here with the city is. If you've sat in this room for over 20 years, as I have, and served on the city council, we've seen so many police officers come through the front door in ceremonies such as this, and then go out the back door under very, very unusual situations. And it breaks my heart sometimes. I mean, I've seen acts of heroism on this police department that will make you tear up. And we've seen probable cause manufactured, there's been scandal, and so forth. To have a longstanding career in this town as a police officer, you would have to know a lot of the other police officers who have resigned, who have been terminated, who have served out their careers here and retired. It's, I've kept in touch with a lot of police officers who are no longer with this department. And I've had the pleasure of having lunch with them. I keep in touch with them. Some of them have brought criminal charges upon the city council. They've been run out of town, had to move out of state. They can't work in police work any longer, because they can't get a good referral from the city. It's, it's, your fellow officers will explain this to you. There's no guarantee here that things will work out. I sued the police chief in the city a couple of years ago in federal court, and won a large lawsuit, because the police chief did not know the law and violated my civil rights. We're going to hear more about violations of the law later this evening. But my prayers to you, officer, and your family going forward. This will be a challenging time of your life, if you know what I've seen over 20 years in the city.
And thank you, Mr. Barrish. Anybody else like to speak? Seeing that, I think we're going to draw this clause and go to our next item, which is item number nine, approval of the final agenda. And I'm going to check with the city manager and see if we have any changes to the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. No changes. I will just point out, though, there's a minor correction on item 11A. That's on the dials.
Very good. Thank you. We do have that in front of us. And we'll wait just a second and let everybody clear out. We're about to lose a significant portion of our audience here, it looks like. Good night, everybody. The good news is, we have some really good seats up front now, for those who want them. Lots of seats. All right, we are to our next item, item number 10, and this is citizens' business. And public comment also for consent calendar items. And I do have to read something first before we begin. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability combination has been requested. So I have no cards. I'm going to open public comment and see if I have anybody wishes to speak. Ms. Alderman, please approach.
I'd first like to say you did follow the Brown Act, and you did open a non-action item in the beginning of the meeting. So to a public comment, and George did. So you're following the Brown Acts, just please keep it up. Anyways, it's not under your discretion. It's each and every item on the agenda. Yes, it is, Mr. Moore, please. I've given you guys the code many, many... Stop it!
Could we have no back and forth from the council, please?
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I'd like to discuss is the hotel. This, again, is, you guys have had a deal in place for three and a half years. I have a 400-page public records document that shows that the parking ride was set up, the whole deal was set up. You donated street improvements, you donated, there were parts, there is a thing that says it is the deal. You did all this without public comment, and you did this without any input. Nobody had a right to do anything else with that land. No, we had no hearings. You, this is not the way to do business, or, and you don't have public comment until next July or something, when it's a done deal. I want to know personally what Mr. Obit is doing in June on the 28th floor of the San Francisco Hotel. Who paid for it? And then the next week, out comes, out comes the RTF for it. This is such a bad deal. You know, you, you guys, you cut us all out, you did all this with the, behind closed doors, and it's wrong. And it's influenced your decision on many items, and it's, it's just, you need to examine, because it's not, it's not kosher, and it's not one, how our council should be done. And I'm just tired of finding all this stuff. You changed the, you changed the press release to take out development agreement after I questioned it was, and the PRA says that it is a development agreement. There's just, you all need to read that PRA, because you'll find how much this is illegal and improper, and how much you've contributed to this without a single word of public input. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alderman. And I'm going to look and see if there's anybody else who would like to speak. Mr. Barrish?
Thank you, sir. Well, Ms. Alderman is absolutely 100% correct on so many levels, on so many points. Who knows what offers may have come in for that piece of property where your hotel is going to be located, had you put the whole workshop idea before you went into this agreement? We have no idea the economic development we might have had, had you not taken a public piece of property and done this back-room deal with this hotel developer, and deprived every other business enterprise in the world to come up with a counter-proposal. At the last city council meeting, I mentioned the fact that the three men on the city council were appointed to the city council under very strange circumstances revolving around the recall election, all having their hands in it, couple of signs on each one of your properties for the recall. I think Mr. Moore had three signs, three recall signs. I think you win the big, four, probably four. Yeah. Before your son threatened to jump off the roof of the house. That was before Oxford. But look, it doesn't matter whether you were appointed to John Gardino's seat, or you were appointed to Pat Gilardi's seat. The fact is, if that's all you got, Mr. Moore, that's pretty sad. Now, at the last city council meeting, you gave Mrs. Harvey another wonderful plaque and award for her service on the city council. I would like to ask you, where is my plaque, sir? I served this city with dignity and honor. I never got a plaque. Matter of fact, council member Pia Jensen never got a plaque, and she promoted transparency and fiscal responsibility back in the 90s. Councilwoman Patty Minnis never got a proclamation, never got a plaque. Here was a business owner, a Democrat, who was refused a seat on the city as mayor the four years she was on the council. She never got an acknowledgement. And the reason is, is that people who occasionally take issue with you are blackballed, they are punished, they are ostracized, they're not given awards, they are not given plaques. You do not work well with other people. That's a farce. I exposed the racists on the city council. I exposed the criminals at City Hall and at the police department. I sued you all in federal court, and I won. You keep trying to spend your way out of a spending problem. And it's a real problem for us in the community.
Mr. Barrish, would you like to speak on consent?
Okay.
All right. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in public comment? Mr. Kirchman?
I was reading last week's newspaper, and it says that Cataná Police Log will not run until further notice due to technical difficulties in their department. I'm a little concerned, because over the last few meetings, I've heard incredible new things that are taking place, knowing the state is relying on dispatch, and the technology is far superior, and yet, something that's been going on for nearly 40 years is now somehow not working. It's kind of like some of the excuses I've gotten for why parking in the smallest city and the county doesn't really take place. There's no parking officer. Well, Ms. Peoples might want to know about that. Parking's not a priority. Less than a week ago, I was noticing a police car that was blocking Charles Street, and I asked the officer what was going on, and she was waiting for a tow truck, because, to quote her, "We love towing cars." I asked her if she was going to do something about an RV that had expired registration and had at least one ticket having numerous violations, and she said, "We don't really have any way of towing a vehicle that size." She's worked for 12 years here, so I guess reliance towing doesn't have the capacity. They're in Pen Grove now, and they tow rather large vehicles. I think an RV would be kind of laughable to them. There seems to be an inconsistency with tows. Some vehicles just get towed after 11 hours after they've been moved. Some are targeted. Some are totally ignored. On Charles Street, there's a vehicle that's been there over a year, and I'd like to find out from staff why it is that that takes place. I've been told you can't tell where city property is. There was no problem before. The Hub Streets, Arthur Street, Olaf, et cetera, oh, we can't tell where public property is. Well, since I've had my cars towed there, it's kind of a contradiction. You should have a law that's citywide. Other areas don't have curbs, other areas in the county, cars are still towed. So it shouldn't be at the discretion of the officer. East Sierra is a city street. Cars haven't moved there in over a year. At least one of you knows that there was a black Volkswagen that had ash from the fire in October. It was visited on Halloween. It was ticketed a little less than a week ago, because I told the same officer that she might want to check on other cars on Ross Street and on McGinnis Circle. And she was able to find the Volkswagen and get two tickets out to it, but couldn't find a Jeep on Ross Street. So it's kind of complicated. It should be a simple thing. If you write a couple of tickets, nothing happens, you tow the car. There should be a process. It shouldn't just be willy-nilly. So I'd kind of like to find out from staff, if possible, why it is that East Sierra...
You did follow the Brown Act and you did open a non-action item in the beginning of the meeting, so to public comment and George did. So you're following the Brown Acts, just please keep it up. Anyways, it's not under your discretion. It's each and every item on the agenda. Yes, it is, Mr. Moore, please. I've given you guys the code many, many... Stop it!
Can we have no back and forth from the council, please?
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I'd like to discuss is the hotel. This, again, is... You guys have had a deal in place for three and a half years. I have a 400-page public records document that shows that the parking ride was set up, the whole deal was set up. You donated street improvements, you donated... There are parts... There is a thing that says it is the deal. You did all this without public comment and you did this without any input. Nobody had a right to do anything else with that land. We had no hearings. This is not the way to do business. And you don't have public comment until next July or something, when it's a done deal. I want to know personally what Mr. Obit is doing in June on the 28th floor of the San Francisco Hotel. Who paid for it? And then the next week, out comes the RTF for it. This is such a bad deal. You know, you guys... You cut us all out. You did all this behind closed doors. And it's wrong. And it's influenced your decision on many items. And it's just... You need to examine because it's not kosher and it's not how our council should be done. And I'm just tired of finding all this stuff. You changed the press release to take out development agreement after I questioned it was. And the PRA says that it is a development agreement. There's just... You all need to read that PRA because you'll find how much this is illegal and improper and how much you've contributed to this without a single word of public input. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alderman. And I'm going to look and see if there's anybody else who would like to speak. Mr. Beric.
Thank you, sir. Well, Ms. Alderman is absolutely 100% correct on so many levels, on so many points. Who knows what offers may have come in for that piece of property where your hotel is going to be located, had you put the whole workshop idea before you went into this agreement? We have no idea the economic development we might have had had you not taken a public piece of property and done this backroom deal with this hotel developer and deprived every other business enterprise in the world to come up with a counterproposal. At the last city council meeting, I mentioned the fact that the three men on the city council were appointed to the city council under very strange circumstances revolving around the recall election, all having their hands in it, couple of signs on each one of your properties for the recall. I think Mr. Moore had three signs, three recall signs. I think you win the big... Four, probably four. Yeah. Before your son threatened to jump off the roof of the house. That was before Oxford. But, look, it doesn't matter whether you were appointed to John Gardino's seat or you were appointed to Pat Gilardi's seat. The fact is, if that's all you got, Mr. Moore, that's pretty sad. Now, at the last city council meeting, you gave Mrs. Harvey another wonderful plaque and award for her service on the city council. I would like to ask you, where is my plaque, sir? I served this city with dignity and honor. I never got a plaque. Matter of fact, council member Pia Jensen never got a plaque. And she promoted transparency and fiscal responsibility back in the '90s. Councilwoman Patty Minnis never got a proclamation, never got a plaque. Here was a business owner, a Democrat, who was refused a seat on the city as mayor the four years she was on the council. She never got an acknowledgement. And the reason is, is that people who occasionally take issue with you are blackballed, they are punished, they are ostracized, they're not given awards, they are not given plaques. You do not work well with other people. That's a farce. I exposed the racists on the city council. I exposed the criminals at City Hall and at the police department. I sued you all in federal court and I won. You keep trying to spend your way out of a spending problem. And it's a real problem for us in the community.
Mr. Beric, would you like to speak on consent?
Okay.
All right. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in public comment? Mr. Kirchman?
I was reading last week's newspaper and it says that Katari Police Log will not run until further notice due to technical difficulties in their department. I'm a little concerned because over the last few meetings, I've heard incredible new things that are taking place. Snoke County is relying on dispatch and the technology is far superior and yet something that's been going on for nearly 40 years is now somehow not working. It's kind of like some of the excuses I've gotten for why parking in the smallest city in the county doesn't really take place. There's no parking officer. Well, Ms. Peoples might want to know about that. Parking's not a priority. Less than a week ago, I was noticing a police car that was blocking Charles Street and I asked the officer what was going on and she was waiting for a tow truck because, to quote her, "We love towing cars." I asked her if she was going to do something about an RV that had expired registration and had at least one ticket having numerous violations. And she said, "We don't really have any way of towing a vehicle that size." She's worked for 12 years here, so I guess Reliance Towing doesn't have the capacity. They're in Pen Grove now and they tow rather large vehicles. I think an RV would be kind of laughable to them. There seems to be an inconsistency with tows. Some vehicles just get towed after 11 hours after they've been moved. Some are targeted. Some are totally ignored. On Charles Street, there's a vehicle that's been there over a year and I'd like to find out from staff why it is that that takes place. I've been told you can't tell where city property is. There was no problem before. The Hub Streets, Arthur Street, Olaf, et cetera, oh, we can't tell where public property is. Well, since I've had my cars towed there, it's kind of a contradiction. You should have a law that's citywide. Other areas don't have curbs. Other areas in the county, cars are still towed. So it shouldn't be at the discretion of the officer. East Sierra is a city street. Cars haven't moved there in over a year. At least one of you knows that there was a black Volkswagen that had ash from the fire in October. It was visited on Halloween. It was ticketed a little less than a week ago because I told the same officer that she might want to check on other cars on Ross Street and on McGinnis Circle. And she was able to find the Volkswagen and get two tickets out to it, but couldn't find a Jeep on Ross Street. So it's kind of complicated. It should be a simple thing. If you write a couple of tickets, nothing happens, you tow the car. There should be a process. It shouldn't just be willy-nilly. So I'd kind of like to find out from staff, if possible, why it is that East Sierra, Arthur Street...
I'm going to ask you to wrap up your little over, Mr. Kirchman. Thank you. All right. I'm going to check one last time if we have any more public comment. And I'm also going to check one more time if there's any comment on the consent calendar. And seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and move to the consent calendar. This is item 11. And I'm going to ask you if any council member wishes to pull the single item, item A in this, or if I have a motion.
Move to approve item A.
Second.
Put a motion in second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that carries 5-0. And we're at item 12, direction on future agenda items. I can ask my colleagues if you have anything you'd like to see come forward in the future, possibly.
I have.
Councilmember Harvey?
I have one item. There will be a discussion about polystyrene with the Snoke County Waste Management Agency. And they will be working towards developing model ordinance for that, for the cities to determine if they want to incorporate that model ordinance or not. So it is likely that it will be two-step process. One, first to come to councils to see what things councils want in or out of the ordinance. They've looked at some cities that are already there, but they kind of want to get the input, make it correct for Snoke County. And then after all of that input is taken and the model ordinance is in draft form, they will want to come back to make sure that it's the way the cities want it. Because one of the things with the new JPA agreement is that cities will get model ordinances and they will implement those. The Waste Management Agency will no longer implement them. So it's sort of important, from a consistency perspective, that we try as best we can. I know it can't be done 100% of the time, but to take these ordinances and get all of our input so that they are implemented the same from city to city.
Very good. I concur. I wouldn't mind seeing that come forward. And I do agree, I'd like to see it as a multi-step process in terms of what the range of possibilities are. A lot of questions there, so... Anything else from my colleagues for that tonight?
None.
Very good. I think we have direction for staff. And we're on to 13 public hearings, action items. And let me turn to the right page. And this is a public hearing on the subject of commercial and personal cannabis land use regulations. And this is written by Vicki Parker, our community development director, who I believe will be leading us through this presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you very much. I'm going to ask Lauren to switch us over to the PowerPoint and grab the lights when you get a chance, if you could. Thank you. Okay. This, as council's aware, is a continuation of the discussion that we began last October, looking at a set of draft regulations for both commercial and personal cannabis uses in the city. So what we're hoping will happen tonight, just briefly, let me step back for a second as a recap. A draft ordinance was taken to the Planning Commission on October 2nd, 2017. And that same draft, along with the Planning Commission modifications, was then brought to this body on October 24th. And we'll go through exactly what the main tenets of the ordinance are in a moment. But we took all of that public comment, all of the council recommendations and the Planning Commission recommendations, wrapped those into the version that's in your packet tonight, along with a couple of other recommendations that came out of subsequent state actions that happened in November. And then this new final version went to the Planning Commission just last week, on the 16th, on January 16th. And that's what the council will be taking action on tonight, hopefully. And moving forward, what we're hoping to do as a follow-on, just so the process is a little more clear, hopefully, is that should the council vote to adopt or introduce the ordinance tonight, we will then put together an announcement similar to an RFP, letting people in the industry know what license types are likely and what our permit requirements are. We'll put that out for a period of time with a hard end date on it. And then the applications that come in will then be brought before the council for a decision making. So we're hoping that all of that happens between now and the end of March, so that we can begin issuing licenses. Real quickly, I just want to call everybody's attention to some handouts that may help track the conversation. There's... Copies have been placed at the dais for the five of you, but there are some also at the back of the room for the public. And one is a handout of license types that are going to be issued by the state. And the second is a landscape-size version of the proposed zoning table. So there's nothing different about the zoning table other than over the version that was in the packet, it's just this one's a little easier to read.
See it.
And in addition to that, I did place at the dais and in the back, a set of typed pages. Your versions are highlighted with some changes that we are recommending to make. Those did not get into the packet, so we can discuss those certainly before the decisions are made tonight. Okay. Just quickly, to go through what the basics are from October, just to give everybody a starting point. The decision was made to allow for expanded adult and medical, commercial cannabis activities. And those numbers were a maximum of two dispensaries or retail facilities. That's typically the type 10 license. But we also added that one of those could be the type 12 microbusiness. So the microbusiness is the one that is a combined cultivation, manufacturing, and retail. So we added the allowance for one of those to be allowed in the commercial Gravenstein zoning. There's a maximum of five outdoor cultivation permits in that mid-range band of square footage, the 5,000 to 22,000-square-foot licenses. And at that time, a maximum of six manufacturing, testing, and standalone distribution licenses. And I'm going to talk about that number in a moment. Also, some of the critical things that came out of those discussions, an allowance for a 2,000-square-foot public dispensing area for each of the adult use and medicinal licenses, and a combined total of 4,000 square foot for licensees that are holding both an adult use and a medicinal use. So the origin of that limit comes from our existing medical marijuana dispensary where that public area is limited. So that's why it's a topic of discussion. It's not a topic, or it's not a restriction in the state licensing. The Level 2 manufacturing, that's the manufacturing license that involves volatile solvents, that's a type 7. And the microbusiness, again, the type 12. In the zoning scheme, both of those require use permits. The others are allowed by right with performance standards that they can meet in the permit application. On the topic of personal and caregiver cultivation on residential properties, so these are the six plants that are allowed for recreational cultivation and the caregiver cultivation. When we last left the draft in October, those were both limited to indoor cultivation only. The adult use was limited to six plants and required no permitting. The caregiver cultivation, at that time, had allowed for up to 30 plants. And that was assuming that someone would have the maximum, could have the maximum, five qualified patients. So that's the derivation of the 35 qualified patients with six plants. And at that time, in October, that one required an administrative permit. Couple of other things probably worth mentioning. In the October draft, we removed the patient cap that had been on. Again, another carryover from the medical dispensary ordinance that we currently have. The original application selection was retained to be done by the city council, but the feedback from commission and council was that administrative renewals or renewals by the city manager or his or her designee was fine, so long as the operations had a successful track record. So that's the draft that's before you tonight. And then the last item from October that I wanted to mention was, the council had requested that staff return with an alternative that allowed for limited outdoor personal cultivation, so that you could take a look at what that might look like. Just a couple of things to mention that have changed outside the city since you saw the ordinance last. Assembly Bill 133 and then the November 29th, I believe it was, release of the state's regulatory requirements. So basically, it's the permitting requirements and all the administrative rules for the state to follow in issuing permits. Those came out in November. And a couple of changes worth mentioning. The state built in to their regulations the allowance for a temporary license to be issued. It's a temporary 120-day license. And the purpose of that was to allow folks that are... Well, there are probably many purposes, but the one that's impactful for us was the ability for existing operators to be up and running on January 1st and not have to wait and close down their businesses to get a state license. They also allowed for an additional 90-day extension beyond that 120, beyond that 120 days, if the licensee was in process. So January 1st plus 120 would be the termination date for the temporary licenses and then a potential 90-day extension. The other point to mention that affected the ordinance was, AB 133 removed the requirement for premises to be separate and distinct. So that was at the heart of that long discussion we had about the size of the public dispensing area. So now, with the rules that are in place at the state level, a licensee could have both an A and an M retail, say, license. And the separation of them is more a paperwork exercise than a physical distinction. They created one new license type, which is a type 9 non-storefront retailer. So that is a retailer that takes orders either online or over the phone, or some method that I'm not hip enough to know about, and fulfills those through a delivery method. So that one has been added into the mix, and we can talk about that more in a moment. And it created two subtypes of manufacturing. One of those is a type N that relates to folks making edibles or topical products using infusion processes. So it's the lesser, what I believe to be lesser, of the manufacturing processes. And then a type P for manufacturers that are really repackaging already-made items. So those are just subtypes of manufacturing licenses. I don't believe they're permanent to us for the ordinance. We will, of course, look at that when we're permitting a follow-on process through the building department or fire department. But they didn't, in our mind, add to the number of licenses. What's before you tonight, as I mentioned, was reviewed by the Planning Commission on the 16th of this month. And as I mentioned earlier, all previous commission and council input has been incorporated into the final formal. Additional comments from the Planning Commission on the 16th had to do, first off, with this square footage limitation on the dispensing area. So we discussed, going into the staff recommendation had been, well, we increased from 800 square feet to 1,000 when staff brought forth the recommendation. The decision-makers decided, because of that whole separate and distinct issue, that 2,000 was okay. And if that meant a licensee was holding both an A and an M, then it's a combined 4,000 square feet. So that was in October. When we came forward this time, we had... There was a debate about that again, what was truly appropriate if they're not two license types. And where the Planning Commission landed was that 4,000 was reasonable for us then, 4,000's still reasonable for us today. In addition to that, there was a ban, both a limit and a ban, on selling accessory items. So a limit on the square footage and a ban on selling promotional items like t-shirts or hats. The Planning Commission recommended a deletion of that ban. So in other words, allow for the sale of promotional items. In the discussion on the type 9 retailer license, because that is a closed storefront, it's basically a minor-level distributor. They're not wholesale distributing, but in my mind, they were a retail distributor. So they didn't seem appropriate for our retail zone in that respect because it would be presenting a closed face in a shopping center or other commercial area. So we increased the number of licenses to accommodate that, but allowed them in the industrial zones because, to us, it was more a warehouse function. They're not customers on the site. The primary issues of concern will be about securing inventory on-site. And that sort of runs counter to having an open, transparent, permeable storefront for folks to look at. So we didn't want to promote the idea of barred windows and other non-friendly things. So those were put in the industrial areas. That license type was added to the industrial areas. And as I mentioned, we increased from six to seven to accommodate that new license type and allow one of those. And then finally, going into the Planning Commission hearing, we had had a number of conversations with Public Safety about whether or not there was a true need to separate personal and caregiver cultivation and require a permit for caregivers. And based on the feedback that we got from the chief and others, that what's easier to regulate and monitor and for the public to understand is to have all the numbers be the same. So if it is... Whether it's for adult recreational use or whether it's for caregiver use, having the cap be at six is by far easier for people to understand than having different numbers. And if that's the case, let's just drop the permit requirement because then any tracking that they need to do for their individual patients would be done at the county and state level. And it's not something we needed to necessarily insert ourselves into. So that's why we removed the requirement for a caregiver administrative permit and we set both of those numbers to six plants. And so then, when that draft went to the Planning Commission, they did recommend the limited outdoor cultivation alternative. So in addition to the two things that I just mentioned, they did vote to allow for that limited outdoor cultivation of two plants or 20 square feet of canopy. And staff continues to recommend no outdoor cultivation on these residential properties. And I'm sure we'll want to talk more about that. And so that hopefully gives us a quick synopsis of where we have been and where we're at tonight and what the staff is asking for. The action tonight is for the council to choose the recommendation of no outdoor cultivation... choose the recommendation of no outdoor cultivation or the limited outdoor cultivation alternatives. And that would be, the no outdoor cultivation would mean that first bullet point there, it means cultivation would be limited to inside a dwelling unit or a permitted accessory structure only. Or conversely, the limited outdoor cultivation would be, as I mentioned, for two plants or 20 square feet of plant canopy. So both of those options have been fully detailed and are ready to implement, so the council could introduce the ordinance tonight, so long as there was a decision on which of those alternatives is preferred. And then to introduce, once that's done, to introduce the ordinance as presented and amended by the planning commission and the other recommendations the council may want to make tonight. Just in terms of orienting yourselves to the packet, I've included the planning commission staff report in there. And I've also, as an attachment to your staff report, the alternative, the limited outdoor cultivation is attached to the staff report. And then the new ordinance follows on behind that. And as I mentioned, it is the, the one that's in the ordinance itself is the ban on outdoor cultivation on residential properties. And then finally, just to call your attention to this set of four sheets that I put on the dais for you tonight, the first two pages of that are highlighted, and they're simple verbiage that was recommended by the city attorney's office to clarify that, for example, on the first sheet where the first sentence reads, "No more than five commercial cultivation permits of any type shall be allowed," this last sentence clarifies that we're not saying that each, whether it's adult or medicinal use, but we're saying it's for the cultivation sites, if you will. And so that sentence clarifies that. Same with the second page. The third page was a simple oversight on my part that I forgot to replace, planning commission with city council. And then the last page, I had inserted this violations section in the alternative, but not in the recommended section for 210, the personal cultivation section. So if the council introduces tonight, I would simply insert this into the alternative if it's not there already. And as you've guessed, we have the police chief here to also join in the discussion, as well as the city manager. We have some things that he would like to add, and with that, we're happy to answer your questions.
All right. I'll bring it back to the council then for any clarifying questions. I think we can see what's been occupying a lot of time at planning. This was a very complex presentation. Thank you for that. Any questions from council? Now, come on. Looking to this side. Councilmember Harvey, you look like you might want to. Questions?
I do have a few questions. So on the personal cannabis cultivation, it says, "Personal cultivation of cannabis is limited to no more than six mature plants per parcel." Does that mean that there could be many, many more plants there? But you're going to determine that, well, these are immature and these are mature, and what, so that's my, a question, because they are in different life stages, if you will, rather than... And then it says, "Regardless of the number of qualifying adults who reside on the property, regardless of the presence of a secondary accessory dwelling," what about, I think you clarified this, what about patients? So what if that person cultivating has five patients? So it talks about the qualifying adults on the property, but it doesn't speak to patients. The addition, which I'm sure we'll talk about, the outdoor, is there no consideration, as I can see here, based upon the size of the lots? So it really just says, as long as it is a one residential unit. So we have, being a city, we have quite a few lots that are extremely small, postage stamp-sized lots. And so I'm thinking that, you know, that that could be an issue, especially if you go farther onto the next page, when it talks about all cultivation, it says cannabis shall not be accessible to minors. Well, if it's in the middle of your backyard, then I don't see, I'm having a hard time understanding, how could that be met? And then... And on the last one, it talks about all practical measures shall be employed to prevent nuisance odors. Again, how does that, if that's for all cultivation, how does that work with outdoor? Because if it's outdoor, then it's not going to have these filtration systems or ventilation systems or any of that. So that, those are kind of my questions. How does that, how does that work like that? And then I think you answered the licenses. If I, if my tallies work right, so in summary, we have two dispensary licenses, five cultivation licenses, and then a total of seven of the other, the other types. Is that, did I do that properly?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then I just, my very last question is, can you help me understand the public facilities? So we talk about allowing this stuff in the Grauenstein Highway corridor, commercial industrial, general industrial, and public facilities. What?
What page is that?
It is on page 34. And then it gets mentioned in other things. Can you, I mean, and then it references public schools, libraries, government... Can you help me with that? There's a context, I'm sure, but I didn't get it. Those are my questions for now.
Did you want to go ahead and respond to those now?
Sure, sure. The, first off, the mature stipulation for mature plants, the chief is telling me he would like it six plants, period. The reason I had mature was because of, because some of them are going to die and not make it to maturity. But I can see that it would be a hard thing to make that case. So we can, we can definitely strike mature and just leave it at plants. This version that's in front of you, in terms of the qualified patients question, this version that is in front of you would definitely limit the number of patients that a qualified, well, I shouldn't say that, it would limit the amount of cannabis that a caregiver had to distribute to patients. So, so long as they could, so long as their set of patients got their needed doses out of a total of six plants, then it wouldn't limit, limit the number of qualified patients. If they had patients that, if they had high demand patients, it may be that they would not be able to serve all five of those with that plant cap.
So it's, so it is, what you're suggesting is six, period?
Period.
Because originally, we had 30, and so that, I did...
Yeah, it's six, period, correct.
Okay, thank you.
In answer to the residential lot slash zoning slash use, they're all kind of wrapped up in there. The way it is written right now, it would, it says it applies in all residential zones, with the exception that the parcel, it can only be developed with a single-family home. So what we were trying to get away from is having multiple families on one parcel where one family may not agree with the lifestyle of another family. And so it provided sort of a built-in tension that is the source, that that kind of thing is the source of most of the complaints that we get in the city. So the way it's structured right now, if you have a single dwelling unit on a parcel, regardless of which zone you're in, and regardless of that lot size, you can, you could have six plants indoors, or with the option, you could have two of those outdoors. So it's not at all related to lot size, the way it's structured. And that's definitely a conversation that we could have.
Okay.
You're right about the outdoor cultivation will not have the same ability for odor controls. There, the way it's structured right now, you couldn't grow in any front or side yard setbacks, and you have to maintain at least a 10-foot rear setback. But I would imagine that that's not going to have that much control over odors. And so if someone is complaining about someone else in the neighborhood having that odor, the way it's structured, if that is a legitimate complaint that we can observe or quantify, then that is grounds for removal of the two outdoor plants. The number of permits, you were accurate in your recap. And then the public facility zone, that's included simply because it's, the only place in the city where we have public facilities is out in the industrial area, and it's two parcels, where the corp yard is and the one that's next to it. So I included those simply because they, for clarity, if someone were to, if the city were to vacate those parcels, they could be sold, and someone might want to develop those. As part of that development proposal, however, we certainly would amend the zoning. We would do zone change on them, because it would know, if it was sold to a private party, it would no longer be appropriate for public facilities. So we could definitely strike that zone category if we wanted to. It would just be realizing that someone in the future would have to rezone the property.
Well, I'm glad to hear that we're not going to have it in La Plaza Park.
Yes, those are, all the parks are zoned, parks and open space.
Okay, we good there?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Look, yeah. One or two quick questions here. Let me see. So I think I know the answer to this, but I want to confirm, because I bet you'll know for sure in more detail. Siena Rosa was looking at the same question, the option we're looking at, if we totally require residential use, adult use grows indoors or partially outdoors. Where did they wind up on this?
They are doing two plants outdoors.
Okay. I thought so, because they started essentially with a similar conversation to us and wound up there. But I wanted to confirm it, so that's helpful to me. And just want to confirm one other thing that I thought I read in here, and I think you confirmed it pretty clearly, and it might be helpful. It sounds like we have a very sufficient hook, or several hooks in here, that if any level of outdoor growing, if it is allowed by the council, it can be removed if it becomes a nuisance. And that determination essentially was made in a neighbor-by-neighbor basis. Is that correct? Did I hear you correctly, that if that becomes a problem, we have the legal standing to take care of that nuisance?
We do...
Or resolve it to some degree?
We, we do have the legal standing. I think what the council would want to know is that it, it's likely not to be something that's easily resolvable, so it might end up being a series of abatement processes before the council.
Nothing ever goes easy. I understand that. But I just, I just wanted, because that's the way I read in here, and I wanted to check. So thank you for bringing that out. All right. With that, then I'm going to open this to public comment before we bring it back to the council. So I'm going to open this. I have some speaker cards here. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in this who has not put forward a card? Would you like to go first, Ms. Alderman? Please do.
The devil is in the details of this. There's a couple of things that have not been mentioned. On page 49 of the, of the packet, it says there are no guns or firearms allowed on the facilities. This is a, this is a federal right that citizens have. And so that needs to be addressed, and the planning commission approved it as that way. The other thing is, you're using, the state is saying we have, we can do six plants. You want to do two or none. Well, you're getting, people are going to be, there should be some consistency. People aren't going to go, well, Katati says two, I have six, you know, it's going to cause people to go underground personally. And 10 feet back, okay. And it's also got to have like a fence and covered outside, plus 10 feet, I'm going to be in Mark Glammon's field backyard if we try to...
Just don't use my water, and it's all good.
Our backyards come together. So it shouldn't be limited this by the local laws to this extent. That's a right we citizens have under the state law, to grow six plants, or 30 plants for caregivers and all that. Why are we putting all these zoning limits and everything on what, and making it so complicated? And on the gun issue, I pers, there was a triple murder two miles down Grauenstein over an illegal grow. I want them to be locked and loaded over at Mercy Wellness, you know, if somebody shows up. That's an expensive product. Not that I use it, and I'm not a fan of guns, but I want to know for the safety of the people to come in and all that, that they're there. So those are my two issues with, I don't really care about, it's a matter of rights rather than whether this is marijuana. You guys are imposing local rules over what are our state and federal rights. Thank you.
Thank you. And normally, I don't speak in between until the end of this, but just as since it would be helpful to other people speaking, I do want to clarify one thing. My understanding, and I'll let staff let me know if I'm wrong, we're not suggesting two only. I believe we're agreeing with the state, six per household. But it would either be six plants grown inside only, or two outside with, and any more you want to do would have to be inside. So the total stays either way six, in case anybody else, because it's, it was a pretty complex presentation, and it's pretty easy to miss that. And I'm seeing nods from staff, so I'm glad I got it right. So Mr. Barrett, would you like to speak?
Well, council, we've come a long way in 25 years, you know. Now, the public discussion that you, we did not hear about tonight at the planning commission level, that was quite lively, was a question put forth by Steve Onis, Commissioner Onis, who asked staff, you know, we, do we have a constitutional issue here regarding the prohibition of firearms? And the planning director here and the police chief took it upon themselves to give legal advice on the issue, saying, sure, no problem. So I got up and objected. I said, you can't get legal advice from a planning director and a police chief, especially this one. They said, if you had a question like that, why didn't you bring it up to the city attorney beforehand and get this clarified? The fact is that this ordinance as written violates our constitutional Second Amendment rights to bear, keep and bear arms, and it's discriminatory upon certain businesses in town. You've got a real problem on your hands. You can't discriminate against this, this business and not discriminate on liquor stores or, or my business. I have a home-based business. You can't burden us with this type of violation of our constitutional rights. To leave this business or any dispensary defenseless to fend off an intruder or an armed aggressor with some steak knives is ludicrous. You're leaving the customers at these facilities at risk as well. Okay? I mean, I'm going to think twice before I frequent any of these places, knowing that there's no firearm there and there's not a cop in sight. So formally, I want to object to this ordinance based on violating my Second Amendment rights. I think you're opening up yourself to a huge civil lawsuit. Many people are, are going to be, be able to be included in this lawsuit. And then you, you know, again, council, you blindside city staff with your dozens of questions tonight, which easily could have been, could have been asked earlier in this week. And I don't like the fact that sometimes you leave them a little tongue-tied on how to handle this. They get a little... They get a little flustered and a little, and blushed because they don't know how to handle it. It's a very uncomfortable situation for them to be in. You know better. Here is the council member's resource guide, it's in here. If you have questions to staff, you're encouraged to ask them these questions during the week so that the staff can prepare you a very good, comprehensive and thorough report. We know you're smart people, you don't have to show it like this, it takes up a lot of our time and so forth. You know, I'm also very offended the fact that you didn't, we didn't hear about this gun issue in the staff report, which means that you're, that you don't want to address it, you're trying to hide it.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I'm through, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Barage. All right, anybody, let's see, we're going to start with a few cards here, and I have, my first card is for Craig Litwin from Sebastopol. Please approach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council and staff. Again, my name's Craig Litwin, and I'm here to talk about how grateful I am for what you're doing for moving this forward. I've watched this process for many years. I've worked with your staff, I've talked to many of you, and I really appreciate all the hard work that you're putting in to make a comprehensive ordinance. It, it shows, you know, some of the things that you're doing are cutting edge, and I think that the compromise that you're looking at with the two plants outdoors, you know, it's better than nothing. For me, I, like I've testified before this, this council, I'd prefer six, but I understand that take it slowly is a, you know, a tried and true part of how we can develop good policies. So thank you for that consideration. I do fully support the 4,000 square feet, as has been mentioned before, it was discussed at the planning commission, it's before you're here tonight, so I do want to just lend my support for that. And also to convey a sense of urgency that you do pass this tonight, that you settle all the issues that you, if there are any, that you must pass the ordinance, move it forward so that folks such as Brandon at Mercy Wellness can move forward with getting the permanent state license. These things take time, CUP hearings take time, use permit hearings take time, there's a lot that goes into that, and the faster that we can move forward on, on applying for that permanent ordinance, both locally and at the state level, is much appreciated. So again, thank you for your time, and I'll yield the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's see, my next card is for Mr. Mike Leboye. I hope I pronounced that right. Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the time. I just have a couple of concerns on safety and security. Ms. Moore brought up during the planning commission about safety for vehicles of transportation of product from the facilities and back with cars like pizza delivery. Ms. Parker responded that the state has mandates regarding that, stipulations regarding what vehicles must have. Mr. Parrish, Police Chief, I appreciate you that you need to be involved in this with your safety and the issues that are at stake in this process. It is a nightmare, I don't envy you folks. I'm not a user of cannabis, but as a Second Amendment right supporter, I ask that you look into this weapons issue. You, by, by putting this in that there are no firearms on site, you have opened the door for them to be robbed. You have put a green light that says, you, all, all the bars in the windows, all the panic buttons will not stop burglary, will not stop theft, will not stop issues. Think of your citizens that are frequenting these places, think of the owners that are putting millions of dollars into this business and having to jump through copious pages of process that must be done. Give them the option if they do want to carry a firearm or not. Maybe possible training and firearms card, go through a process of proving to Chief Parrish that they have qualified enough to buy a gun in this state, they should be qualified enough to carry a gun at their business, to protect their business, to protect their employees and their product, and more importantly, your community members that go there. A dispensary in Sebastopol was just robbed last week, I believe, they lost $29,000 of product. There's proof right there that all the security bars and cameras don't stop it. Granted, it was done at the evening, but if you have processing plants and you are processing buildings and warehouses that are working all night, hours of the night, these people should have the option to protect themselves. So I would hope that the city attorney would make sure that due diligence is done to, that not, the Second Amendment right is not being tarnished, that there is an option for these business folks, and that you allow them to do the option of carrying or not. You are requiring that any security personnel be met with Chief Parrish. You should also allow them to meet with Chief Parrish if they would like to carry a firearm or not, to protect their business and their time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's see. And my next card is for Mr. Kirchman, Eric Kirchman.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that this is getting kind of complex to the point of being difficult to follow, it's difficult for the staff to put the pages together. This isn't the only place that's doing this. I would hope that you could look at some other places. I just happened to be in Oregon watching an eclipse in August, went to a store, it was like a store. It was across from an auto shop, it was in the center of Bend, it was, you know, no, no window, I mean, no bars on the windows, as far as I know, there was no guard, there were four pleasant people, I got some glasses for the eclipse, luckily I had some better ones, but it was a friendly interaction. I was just there as a spectator, I'm somewhat naive to all the intricacies, other than unfortunately along 116, there have been break-ins and, and killings, and it's mostly the trimmers, but it's still not a healthy thing. And yes, guns are involved, and yes, money's involved, and burglary's involved. I don't have all the solutions, but I would hope that you could check in with places like Bend, Oregon and see, here's, here's a product already ready. Coincidentally, this afternoon, I was in Nevada speaking to a district attorney. They are still trying to find out how to do their program. There are a number of states that have legalized marijuana. The problem in Nevada is that they thought liquor companies would be happy to carry the product along, liquor companies are happy to carry their own product and don't want to add to, to their issues. So people can have great ideas, but it doesn't necessarily work. It might be worthwhile to check in with Oregon, check in with Colorado, check in some other communities of similar size, because we don't want to be too big or too small, and if they have four years of experience, they may well be able to say, well, this was a great idea, but it tanked horribly, this is something that we do and it works really well. So I realize staff can't be on the phone calling every place in Colorado or Oregon, but it's not out of the question to possibly find some things that work. A store selling t-shirts, I don't think is out of line. A warehouse where there's a tremendous amount of product, I think, is problematic. I know people that make the vape materials for smoking. Okay, I don't want hash oil or, or whatever else to be manufactured, but there's various things with application where I have a problem in terms of, people can't smoke it in public, so they're going to smoke it in their apartment. Well, that's going to involve some issues because right now you have a smoking ordinance. What, what's a person supposed to do if they manage an apartment, if they live next door to somebody who has a very odorous area, even if it's inside, which is legal for them to do? What, what do we do as neighbors? What do we do in terms of that sort of circumstance? And yes, there are kids, and how does it work in, in real life? How is it going to work in a, in a given mixed-use building? So these are the things that unfortunately we still need to work on. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, and my next card is for Mr. Steve Monahan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members and staff, thank you for your time this evening. I just wanted to come up and say that I think this ordinance is very well thought through and I, has my, I think it's a great idea and I think it should move forward. I'd like to propose one potential change or one comment for consideration under the standards for commercial cannabis cultivation, which is section B of the proposed ordinance, item number five. There is a currently proposed a cap of five cultivation licenses. My only proposal would be that that cap be considered to be increased or potentially Cannabis is a significant potential economic opportunity for the city, and I think that the opportunity to have some more projects that are contributing to the tax base, I know there's a budgetary hearing after this hearing this evening, I, I just think that it'd be, the opportunity to have some more of these projects that are done sustainably and, and well thought through would be of significant benefit to the city. So, besides that, I think staff's done a wonderful job on this, and I thank you for all of your time this evening. Take care.
Thank you. Let's see, and my next speaker will be Amber Rosucci from Sebastopol.
Greetings. Hello, my name is Amber Rosucci, and I've been doing community outreach for Mercy Wellness and getting to know the local businesses and the residents of Katati. The many local community members that I've connected with have voiced their support of Mercy Wellness and this ordinance, and I have not encountered any opposition. I also just wanted to let you know that we are planning an educational outreach project at the Songbird Healing Center for the local residents and business owners to learn more about cannabis and how to responsibly use it in their daily lives. And to allow for the potential growth of this business, please consider the importance of adopting the 4,000 square feet of retail space. I'm encouraging you to adopt the ordinance this evening, and I just really appreciate all of the time and energy and education that you guys have taken on over the last year on our behalf. Thank you to Vicki in particular.
And thank you. Again, I have one more card tonight, and for that is for Brandon Levine. Welcome, Brandon.
Well, council and staff, I'm going to be real short, I just want to show my support for the draft of the ordinance, the way that it is written. Don't think I would change anything else. Having them increase the size to the dispensary was, is huge for not just me, but the other applicant that it will be applying. We really thank you guys for, you know, reaching out, and we were happy to share whatever information that we had. So thank you, and we support the way, the ordinance, the way that it's written.
And thank you. And I'm going to look around one more time before I close public comments, see if there's anybody else who wishes to speak, and seeing nobody approach, I'm going to bring this back. Couple of quick questions for staff, and let me know if I missed anything, but let's see, I heard question, valid concern about Second Amendment rights being violated here. I would imagine that was part of the review process, but I think that's something we all need to hear about. If you could illuminate us on that, that would be helpful first. Secondly, let's see, there was a question about how much, looking at lessons learned from other states and other regions and even other cities. I believe there's been some of that, but if you could speak to that, because that's a darn good point. We've had some people that were on the ragged front of this, and it's smart to learn the lessons from them. And let's see, lastly, oh yeah, the questions of smoking in apartments, I, I would imagine the answer would probably be edibles, but I'll let you speak to that. And I think that's all I had in terms of questions from staff. One more question from the audience?
The one about the cap of five licenses, I believe that we always have the option to change that.
I would imagine, that might be something more for council discussion, I think, is, but I'd be happy to hear staff speak on that as well, so good point.
But I, but I guess my question is, is we always have that option to be able to change that at a future date. It's not cast in concrete, correct? Just similar, not too dissimilar?
I would certainly expect so, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so I just, I didn't want anyone to walk away thinking that whenever we put a, a number on something, that it's cast in concrete forever. We can always revisit things.
Certainly, there's a balance of trying to find something that doesn't inhibit, but doesn't go too far either, and especially when it's something vaguely new, something difficult. I can see all the business people in the audience shaking their head too, so I think we're all dealing with that.
I mean, no different than when we looked at, when we had to look at the, the fast food ordinance, when it came time.
Right, exactly, yeah, that's a good example. And you had a question for staff, I missed?
I did, I actually had a couple of quick questions.
Well, now, I haven't got to us asking questions yet, but if you had something from the audience, what I wanted to get to first?
No, I believe our development, community development director is going to address those Second Amendment issues?
Yeah, if I could get you to go through the things we brought up, then we'll bring it back here, and I'll go to you first, so we can, as we begin discussion, you can toss out some questions.
You better.
It's a promise.
Okay. Let me take them maybe in reverse order, so I can give Robin an opportunity to speak as well. The, first off, the number of the license types for cultivation, the, the reason that we landed on five at the staff level, and those were not amended by either the planning commissioner of this body going forward, was we were trying to set a number that seemed to work and not overly commit our industrial areas to one industry. So we took the total square footage of existing building area, and we tried to get to a number that was going to result in less than 20% of our industrial park devoted to cannabis uses. So it was just a way of leveling out any boom and bust cycles. So there was nothing magic about that number, it was the one that we felt got us closest to staying below 20% with license applications maxing out. And in response to Councilmember Harvey, that's absolutely true, as we go forward and we decide that, you know, our businesses are stable and it wouldn't hurt to add another license type, we could certainly amend it in the future. Smoking in apartments, the way our smoking ordinance is written, it, it is, marijuana or cannabis is considered the same as tobacco for the smoking, so yes, it is not allowed in units with shared walls. We do look at other examples when we're doing our background research, and we try and figure out the best practices, what's appropriate to bring forward to Katati, what's inappropriate to bring forward to Katati. So that's just part of, just about every single thing that we do in our department. And as far as the Second Amendment rights, we are well within our rights to disallow firearms on commercial properties, and I think I'll turn it over to Robin to say more than that, she's much more eloquent about it, I'm sure, but it's not unusual for any of our commercial permits to not allow firearms on a property.
No pressure, City Attorney Donahue, but eloquence was suggested.
Well, I appreciate that, I wish I could be eloquent, but one thing, first of all, if I may, I just wanted to point out, because I heard a number of people in the audience urge adoption tonight, and as a non-urgency ordinance, tonight is the first step of two steps whereby the council may introduce the ordinance, and then there would be at least a two-week wait for your next meeting to adopt. So really, what is before you tonight is introduction, and that's the opportunity for all of these questions to be raised. In terms of the Second Amendment, I have not had an opportunity to do extensive case law research, however, I am quite confident that, given that this is a commercial permit, I'm not concerned about losing a Second Amendment constitutional case regarding this provision, and I'm aware of at least one other city in Northern California that has a similar requirement. I would expect, if I started researching all of the different city regulations, that we would find this in others of them. It's very common for the state to regulate firearms in the context of different factual situations, and indeed, I believe that it's common in some instances for the federal government to regulate as well with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco and Firearms, there are a number of restrictions. So I, I don't have a concern if you wish me to do further analysis before your next meeting, and if I were to find something to the contrary, I would certainly bring that to your attention.
Very good. All right, I'm looking for head nods from the council, if we'd like to give direction just for the city. just for the city manager or the city attorney. Just in good prudence here to do an additional layer of research, since we have two weeks before our next one comes back, and we'll assume, and we will still see how that works out. So, bringing this back to the council, it's a pretty weighty presentation, but I think it comes down to about five items. On packet page 19, the things that have changed since the last time we talked about this essentially was the increase in the dispensing size to 4,000 square feet, was clarifying that all permits are applicable to both recreational and medical licenses, was allowing for the sale of promotional items like t-shirts or baseball caps, and removing the requirement for caregiver permits, essentially making them the same, since, in essence, they've become the same by our laws. And lastly, and probably of most interest, was the option for limited personal cultivation. So, obviously, we can discuss whatever we want, council, but I would suggest as a starting point that we work on those five items and just check in where we're at in those. And if anything else has changed, if there's anything else you'd like to bring up, I'd love to hear it. And as promised, I will start with Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Lamont. The, I never got a clarification of reading the whole packet on why the staff recommended no outdoor cultivation at all?
Yeah, I can, I can give you the broad picture, and then I'm going to let Mr. Parrish or Chief Parrish speak about it as well. For the simple fact that, as I briefly touched on earlier, it's more difficult to control nuisance issues, so more difficult to control odors, more difficult to control access and keep it out of the hands of minors, more difficult to screen it from public view, a combination of things that we're really looking at it from the community quality side.
And then, as your chief of police, I definitely recommend that outdoor grows be banned in residential areas. I've been very supportive of the commercial cannabis aspect of this, and that's because the police department, we can set securities and control and meet with the dispensaries and commercial businesses and make things safe. I have control over that. I don't have control over what happens in neighborhoods. I've worked with Mercy Wellness in the past. They've been more than responsive to my security needs and recommendations. And for example, you know, the size of the, the square footage going to 4,000 at Mercy Wellness for their showroom, I have no issues with that, because again, you know, if there are security measures that need to be added at that business, as police chief, I can, I can do that, and Brandon's been more than responsive, like I said. So, law enforcement, we would not recommend that somebody put a $1,000 bicycle in their backyard, because it's going to get stolen and things are going to happen. We've all read the newspaper time and time again about things happening with these outdoor grows. The county does not allow outdoor grows unless it's in a residential area, unless it's at least a two-acre parcel, for good reason. But time and time again, I mean, we've seen horrendous crimes behind this. There's going to be a black market also now, and so the value of that plant in the backyard, I think, is going to be even more increased. So, the state law says, you know, somebody can grow six plants. We recommend that the city allow that. We really don't have a choice, but we recommend that they grow it indoors. So, if you want to get cannabis, you can grow six indoor plants. If you don't want to do that, you can go to a dispensary and buy a recreational. If you want to avoid the tax, you can get the state card and get the medicinal cannabis. The fact is, is that council has the right to ban grows in neighborhoods. You have that right. Beyond that, you know, just me looking at a risk versus benefit analysis, right? There's no benefit for the city to allow outdoor grows in neighborhoods where people are raising families. However, there is a risk, and we all know there's a risk. And for those reasons, including the odor that we can't control, I recommend that council not allow outdoor grows in residential areas.
So, at this point, we really don't have the capability of monitoring how many plants are grown indoors. We don't know what the canopy size is, we don't know anything like that, because it's indoors. We don't know if it's secured for minors unless we have a complaint. And if we have a complaint, I would imagine we would have to get the appropriate authorization and then go do a little investigation, right?
Correct, but it's still all indoors and not outdoors.
Right. So, there's an expression out there that I often think of when you are looking at saying, "I just want a couple of plants outdoors. I don't really want to do four more in the house. I just want a couple in the back. I got the setback, I got a fence next to my $2,000 mountain bike." There's a buyer beware. So, if you're going to have that situation, I think that there, as you said, there are risks involved. Being in the insurance industry, that's all we do is risk, and we've tried to mitigate those risks. So, I would think if somebody was in a position where they were looking at that particular enterprise for their personal cultivation, didn't necessarily want to get involved in going to a dispensary, didn't want to necessarily get involved in the black market, but just felt like that would be something that they would be interested in, that they would try to mitigate those risks. So, I don't, I don't see that as a significant risk versus six plants outdoors, which might create, you know, three times the amount of odors, and certainly a greater visibility, I would imagine, you know, if they can't shelter it well enough from view. And so, that's my concern regarding those. I think that if people are interested in that, they're probably going to take the measures to make sure that that doesn't, that some of that risk is mitigated. Along the same lines, when we're talking about complaints from citizens and what could be an issue on those, do we have a mechanism at this point for measuring quantity of odor? Quality, quantity of odor?
No, just neighborhoods complaining about the odor, but there's like, there's no measurable device, no.
Okay. So, we don't know if two plants is going to be a significant odor problem versus, I would imagine, three times more would have a greater concentration of odors, right? Stands to reason.
So, at certain times of year, even just a couple of plants will have a lot of odor.
So, at certain times in the years, we also have what's often referred to as the Sonoma Aroma, which is definitely pretty pungent and strong. What is the, and maybe staff knows this question, what is the length of time from a plant growing to where it becomes mature and emits these odors? I mean, is it an eight-week window?
So, while it's growing, you can smell it, but toward the end, when it starts, when the flowers start to come back, it's really pungent, but it's always noticeable. And I know this because I had a neighbor with a grow.
Well, yeah.
I'm glad you qualified that.
So, the strongest period of time where that odor could be a concern would be, how long a period of time?
Well, it depends, because all different people growing different strains of marijuana, it's going to, it's going to bud at certain times of the year, so all in the...
Outdoor, it's going to bud at a certain time of the year. Indoor, you're going to have it grown all year long, because it's got artificial, you know, stimulation for growth. So, do we know what that period of time might be? Personally, I think the ability not to at least allow for two is a little restrictive. And then, if down the road, we had a lot of concerns, then we'd say, hey, we had too many complaints, and it was a problem, you've got to bring them indoors. So, then they take their plants, and they bring them indoors. And I would imagine if most people, if they're going to invest in that time and effort, would take those plants and probably put them in a pot, so that when it got cold, they could bring them in, or whatever they needed to do. Security, if they're going to be away for the weekend, you know, put them in their enclosed, minor-proof area in the home, so. So, we don't really know how to, we don't have a quantifiable measurement on what would be an offensive amount of odor.
No.
So, that's going to be difficult, I would imagine, and the only way to avoid that would is say no outdoor growing at all.
That's my recommendation.
It is. Well, I just, I think that there are many things that can be done to look at the issue, and then if it becomes an issue down the road, and we really have a significant amount of complaints, then we can always come back.
All right. And are we good on the other items? I'll just check in with you, the other bullet points on packet page 19, most notably 4K on the retail facility side. Do let me know when you're speaking if everybody's okay with these other items.
I'm okay.
Beautiful, thank you. Councilmember Skilman, you look like you are ready with something to say.
Well, glad, it shows on my face. So, I am fine with the 4,000 square feet and the other bullet point items that are on page 19. I think I've talked about this before as well, and I would respectfully disagree as far as the outdoor grow. I've just, having worked in Mendocino County, not to pick on anybody, but that just happens to be where one of the places I've worked, and I did asset forfeiture, my office constantly smelled like marijuana, and that was just the bags of money being brought into my office. It had nothing to do with any plants being brought in or any product. It's just, and it's amazing. There were, I had worked with juvenile in the Juvenile Justice Center as well, and all kinds of, you know. Anyway, I don't need to pontificate as far as war stories, but I would agree, just based on my experience and background, that an outdoor grow is not a good idea, even at a small degree, although there will be competing cow odors occasionally. You're right, I agree with that. I will not, if I'm in the minority, I will not hang up the ordinance being introduced tonight if everybody else is okay with an outdoor grow. I will not impede. I think there's too many other important reasons for this to go forward today, especially the continuing the service to medical marijuana patients, most importantly. So, I have voiced my opinion and why, but I also will not hang up the process, just because of that one of the five issues. So, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. And I'll look to the vice mayor and see if you're ready to weigh in.
Sure thing. Yeah, the items on packet page 19, I'm fine with all four of those, absolutely fine with 4,000 square feet, and absolutely opposed to outdoor growing, which I believe is what is recommended in the ordinance. Is that correct?
No, the ban on outdoor is the recommendation.
And what did I just say? I thought I, I thought that's what I said.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Maybe not. I may not have. Let me just, let me reiterate myself. I am not in favor of outdoor grows, which is like a ban, right?
Comma, I missed the comma.
Okay, that's good, that's good. And it's more than just, I'm not going to call it aroma, because that's got a positive connotation, but odor. It's, I think it's much more than odor. You know, if you put a grid of six boxes, let's call those houses, and I'm in the middle of one of those grids, and by chance, if there's two plants on each of those residences, there's 10 plants. And in August, let me just say that in my neighborhood, in years past, there has been this scent that has come out when it's really warm August day, and it's pretty horrific. Not to say that the Petaluma Hill aroma is not horrific in the fall as well, it really is, but I can't compare those two. They're two completely different things. And, and I'm concerned more from a safety perspective than anything else. You know, if neighbors on either side of me, which they're not right now, but if on either side of me were growing plants, and somebody wanted to break in or just into the backyard, but they stumble across my house and they cause problems, that's not a good thing. So, that's my main reason for, for saying that an outdoor grow at this point should not occur. If we put two plants, or whatever the magic number is, and we try to change that down the road, that's going to be like climbing, you know, a greased pole. It's going to be really, really difficult, in my opinion, to do something like that. So, that's why I say we start with zero, and if we want to change that to something down the road, that can be discussed in the future. And we are actually three weeks away from our next city council meeting, so I just gave the city attorney an extra week of time, which means we should get a bit of a discount, okay? Just keeping that in mind. So, again, did I cover all of the bulleted points? Then I'm done for now. I have a lot of other things I want to say, but for now, we'll just leave it there.
All right, Councilmember Harvey.
Okay. So, with the four items, the square footage and the permits and sale of promotional items and the removal of the requirement for caregiver permits, I am okay with those. I am also not willing to be there for outdoor growing. I think that we went to a lot of work the last time to put in the things that if a person doesn't want to do it indoors, if they want to have a structure outside, and it can meet all of these things, dealing with the odor and making sure that it's locked and making sure that kids can't get into it and all of that, and they choose to have that structure outside, I think that you can put your six plants out there. Your example, Vice Mayor, was really good. We do live in a community, and in the majority of our areas, our community is very, very close. The lots are getting smaller and smaller and smaller and smaller, the more we build. And, you know, when I asked, and I did discuss this prior with Ms. Parker, she was not surprised by my questions. I spent time with her, so they were not a surprise to her. I do try and do that. You know, she explained that, well, some lots, what they would have to do is put those plants right up against their house and hope that they didn't come, you know, climbing in the windows and didn't get farther out than the 10-foot setback. Your example of houses surrounded by one another, I heard stories from people when I campaigned in 2016 where their backyards were gotten into because someone in the area had, had plants growing, and they weren't sure what yard it was, and so they were kind of jumping from yard to yard to yard. And, you know, these people were frightened, you know? They had nothing going on in their yard, but, you know, needless to say, they still had people, you know, jumping in their yards. So, I also agree with your starting out with zero and moving if there seems to be a reason to move, that we should start in that direction, because once you put it out there, you can't pull it back. You know, it just is way too difficult to pull it back. It's like giving someone permission to do something and then saying, oh, no, never mind, we decided that you can't have that permission. So, I'd rather start slow. I also haven't had, you know, a ton of people beating down the door, saying, I have to have this outdoors either, and I don't see in the audience, you know, a plethora of people out here saying, we have to have, you know, our outdoor plants. So, that's how I feel about that.
Well, let's see. One of the joys of being mayor is you get to go last, and one of the other jobs of mayor is being able to count five. Not a particularly onerous or difficult task, but still one that you should pay attention to as mayor. Nevertheless, I will take my colleagues, a little of their time, just to explain where I'm at. I lean more towards my colleague, Mr. Moore's opinion on this, and I'll just lay out why, although I think I see where we're going tonight. So, first of all, I think one of the main things that I've been concerned personally about is, in the way that this particular industry has grown up, we've wound up with a byproduct of having commercial growing in neighborhoods. And I think that's been a problem. I've been very concerned about it, and that level of money, that level of growing has been the thing to my mind that has led to a lot of problems. And it's not lost to me that indoors strikes me as more of a problem. If somebody's coming to steal plants from me, and I personally believe it's less likely with two than a larger amount, but who could say? But I'd rather they were going to get something out of my backyard than planning to break into my house. We pretty much, they lock the door on that. But here's how I viewed it, because I looked at it and I thought, wow, we've got all these things to balance. Number one, the personal rights, why the city want to do this? What would the benefit be to the city? Because it's basically the rights that have been granted to the people in the city by the state to be able to do this. Granted, we have control over that, but that's... Granted, we have control over that, but that's a good place to start. So that weighs in my mind. Secondly, just as strongly as Councilmember Harvey mentioned, the potential nuisance concerns. Smell problem, you know, I'm not sure, it's probably more than just somebody being grouchy and it's probably not to the end of the world. I'm sure it's that type of thing. It lays right in the middle. Theft and vandalism certainly are problems, certainly. I, my personal belief is that over time, with the greater availability for small plants in people's backyards, it's going to be a lot more random and more vandalism as opposed to organized crime or theft, but. And then lastly, the environmental concern, or logic rather, of using, telling people, you have to grow plants inside your house with ventilation and lights and a lot of wasted electricity instead of using sunlight in your vegetable garden. I heard that from a lot of people. Actually, I heard roughly fifty-fifty. I heard, a lot of people actually didn't have any opinion, didn't care. Of the ones that did actually have an opinion, some agreed, yes, they didn't like the smell. And others said, that was the first thing I heard from a lot of people. It seems kind of, I won't use the word, they said, I'll say logical, that you're demanding people to do this indoors instead of out in sunlight. So I looked at these and I thought, you know, all three of these issues are all right. They actually are all valid concerns. So how do you find a balance that recognizes all of them, something that maybe works to all those things? Not just stupidly meet in the middle, but actually find something that gives appropriate credence to each thing. And I did lean towards the two plants simply because I thought it was as small as you could get and still allow somebody be able to grow something in their backyard if they wanted to. I would agree the idea of having multiple starts all throughout the house. I think that's a danger zone. If we're going to pick a certain number, that's got to be the number. And if you have a bad harvest and lose a plant along the way, that's unfortunate, but it is what it is. That's also why I supported two, because I thought you have to at least have that shot like that. So, and I thought that given such a vastly lowered amount, but even if our colleagues in Santa Rosa, who went through the same discussion, finally realized, yeah, this, this meets all these needs, that this lowered amount would basically lower those concerns on nuisance and smells. And, and lastly, we have the hooks to deal with it. But I would very much just like to see it put up for a vote and then be defeated. So then I can quite happily vote along with all the rest of you to support it with a total ban on outdoors. That's my direction tonight. That's the way I'd like to go.
Mayor Landon, may I add to that if I may?
Please.
The, the thing that struck me in the conversation on the opposition to this, coming from my fellow councilmembers who are opposed to the outdoor plants, is fear. It's driven by fear and it's an unfounded fear at this point. And I'm thinking, that's not, I don't think that's the best way to make a decision on something. Because if you say you're not going to allow it, it will never come back until you have a complete change of counsel and you have people that are adamantly supporting that and come up and say, we're going to change that ordinance. Otherwise, it will never happen. It's like, you know, it's, it's the antithesis of taking, giving something to somebody and taking it away. It'll never happen. When you talk about Mendocino and you talk about the asset forfeiture, you're not talking about two plants. You're talking about acres of plants and the cash involved in that, and then you have those issues involved. I don't think your two plants is going to have, I don't even know what the production value of two plants is on a flowering. Couple of pounds, something like that, if even, you know. And so I, I think having that fear component coming in and saying, oh my God, it's going to be, you know, fear and loathing in Cattati because somebody's got two plants in there. And then when you talk about the grow house in our neighborhood and, and the odor from that, Councilmember Lawson, Vice Mayor Lawson, that was a grow house. We know that there was a heck of a lot more plants in that house than two. I don't even know that I would know, walking by a neighborhood home, if they had two outdoor plants in, in our area, unless I was in a really boxed-in neighborhood where, where the odors were not allowed to dissipate. So I, I have a concern when you, when fear is a motivator for avoiding something.
May I retort?
You may. It's up to the mayor.
A quick retort is well, is well.
Yeah, it's, it's not fear. I, I think it's, it's more of a safety concern. I wouldn't call it fear. It's not at all fear. And I was not speaking of that house. I was speaking of a different house that is not a grow house. And plants are typically six feet or taller, at least from what I've seen out in the national park where we harvested, you guys probably don't want to hear this, Brandon especially, but we harvested some fifty thousand plants one year and burned them all up. It was what we had to do. But my point is, having, having walked through grow sites pre and post harvest, they're very tall plants and our fences are all five to six feet high. So, you know, there is no, there's no screening. I, I mean, when I saw that in here, you know, the possibility of screening, I, I just, I chuckled. It's like you don't screen these things. They're tall, they smell, that's, that's all well and good. I'm just trying to make a point that this is not about fear. This is about safety. And it's no different than, you know, somebody saying, well, people shouldn't be driving thirty-five miles an hour through the residential area. It should be twenty-five. That's not fear, it's safety. So that's where I was coming from. I'll leave it at that.
So I find it interesting, fifty thousand pounds and your employees burned that? That must have been an interesting day for the employees.
We will talk about that after.
I hope you provided snacks for everybody that did that work. All right, is there, that seemed like a knowing laugh from the audience. I've seen everybody laugh at that one. Is there, I think we've had a pretty good discussion, but if anybody would like to make any further comments, I'd be happy to hear them. I'm looking around. I think we've covered it well, but somebody might have something else they want to offer. Are we good? All right, with that, I think it's down to doing a motion. As I asked, I would appreciate the opportunity to have an up or down vote on doing this and I recognize where we'll go. And then I'll be very happy to vote yes on the second one if the first one fails. But I would appreciate a motion to pass this with the, with the option, the outdoor grow option.
Sure. Well, I move to introduce an ordinance amending Title seventeen, Chapter seventeen point four-two by adding section seventeen point four-two point two-zero-zero, commercial cannabis uses, and seventeen point four-two point two-one-zero, personal and medical cannabis cultivation, amending tables two dash two and two dash three of Chapter seventeen point two-two, allowable uses and permit requirements, amending Chapter seventeen, is anybody going to stop me? Seventeen point nine zero, definitions repealing municipal code, Chapter eight point two-four, medical marijuana dispensaries, and adopting exemption findings pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I think all, all motions should include a mention of striking of the word mature in that section.
I think I heard agreement on the council. Now I'm looking around. Agreed? Very good. Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second for that?
So just to clarify, this is with the ban or without the ban for outdoor use? Because I thought you were saying.
This is without the ban. This would be, if I'm understanding.
The staff report is with the ban. That was the point I was trying to clarify earlier.
So that's what you're proposing, is with the ban? Okay.
So the, any, second?
So we have a second?
I would second.
I'd like to make an amendment and I'd like to see if there's a second for amendment. I'd like to amend that to be exactly as read so I don't have to make you read it again, but with the option. Do I have a second for that?
I would second that.
So proceed you. We'll take a quick vote on that. We'll see where we're at. If that fails, then we'll move right to your motion. If there's no further discussion, we'll vote on that. Do we have any discussion on the amendment from anybody? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Very good. This is the way you do it. You have a good thorough discussion on it. Everybody gets to share their opinion and the majority carries as it should. So with that, I hate to make you read it again.
No, you won't.
Well, then I will look to somebody else to read it. Would you like to make the motion?
Does it, does it need to be read again? I mean, it's, it's the motion on the floor.
Our attorney sat here all this time. She wants to hear it twice.
I actually think it's the motion on the floor and I don't think you need to read it again.
Very good then. Well, then it looks like you get a break. So we have a motion on the floor and I'm going to call the vote on that. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? And none. Very good. All right, so we have our first reading done. We will be back in a few weeks for a second reading on this. Thanks, everybody who came to participate and share their input in this. We appreciate it. And give you just a second to flip gears and we'll get to our next item. Actually, I think we're going to take about a short five-minute break before our next agenda item, so everybody will adjourn for just five minutes. You've got to run for it. That's a short one. I'm looking for errant council members, Councilmember Skilman and staff. We are ready to get going here. We say five minutes and these things always go a little bit longer, so I'm doing my best. So we are back for regular agenda and this is item fourteen. And this is, the city council has recommended to receive and discuss a mid-year budget. Thirteen B, I'm sorry, did I miss something? That's what I get for taking a break. Ah, yes, indeed. The extension.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this is just the extension of the urgency, interim urgency ordinance, temporarily prohibiting any new commercial cannabis operations. And as, as you know, the council had originally introduced a, this urgency ordinance back in December and it, and just the way state statutes are written, the initial urgency ordinances are forty-five days and then the second crack at it is ten months and fifteen days and then the third crack at it is a year and then you have better figure out what you're going to do after that because then it goes away. So this is, there was two other ones related to cultivation that are, that were adopted early in two thousand and seventeen and they are on the, the, the one-year third extension right now. This is, this would be the second extension, or actually the first extension, the second time you've seen this urgency ordinance on commercial uses. And I'll just say that there's nothing different in this based on the last one you saw, aside from the timeframe. And the intent is that once the permanent ordinance comes back to council at the next council meeting, this, this and the other two interim urgency ordinances will come back to council with a date certain for rescinding them at the same time that the permanent ordinance goes into effect. So it's really just to cover that weird temporal gap that we're dealing with right now from when the state's issuing licenses before we have our permanent regulations in place, just to hold things the way they are. But I'd be happy to answer any questions on it.
Any questions for staff in the council at this time? Looking to both sides, seeing none, enjoying the comment of weird temporal gap. You don't usually hear that at city council meetings. It's appropriate for the subject matter, I guess, so it's all good. So I'm going to open it to the public and see if we have any comments on this. Would anybody like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close it and bring it back. And if there's no further discussion then, I would probably entertain a motion to extend this existing interim urgency ordinance.
I would make a motion that we, city council, extend the existing interim urgency ordinance prohibiting most new commercial cannabis uses prior to adoption of final cannabis land use regulation.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Moore, second by Councilmember Harvey. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? And that carries five zero. That was done smartly. All right. Now this time, we really are, at least I hope, to fourteen A. So we'll wind that up again. And again, we are going to be discussing under fourteen A, receiving and discussing mid-year budget and long-range projection for the general fund. This is written by City Manager Obit. I thought we'll have Mr. Veloso existing as well. So staff, please begin your presentation.
Well, dear, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Norm Veloso, Director of Admin Services. So tonight we'll be presenting to you a mid-year budget report as well as a long-range financial report. City Manager Damien Obit will be co-presenting it with me tonight with the first half covering the mid-year budget report. So the mid-year budget report is an opportunity for staff to update the city council on current year budget performance based on actual operating results through December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. The intent of this report is to provide council with an update on how major revenue sources and operating expenditures are tracking in comparison to the approved budget. Additionally, the mid-year revenue and expense results and projections discussed in the report serve as a good baseline from which to begin developing the city manager's fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen recommended budget. For the emphasis tonight, we're going to be going over general fund. As we all know, that specifically on the general fund revenues, as it pertains so much, general fund revenues are very instrumental in determining the maintenance and the, the potential enhancement of services for the city. So we're going to be focusing first on the general fund, followed by the enterprise funds, namely water and sewer. But before I get started on that, I would like to give the council a little bit of economic outlook on the U.S. side, the California side, state side, and also the, the county side. The U.S. economic outlook continues to show a very healthy two thousand and eighteen. The gross domestic product expected to grow to about two-two point, two percent to two point five percent with economic expansion going through two thousand and twenty. There is also expected continued increase in consumer spending in the coming years. As we all know, we just had a tax reform that is expected to have a very positive effects on the corporate profitability because it's, it will result to higher market valuations. With that, unemployment is also, is currently at four point one percent and expected to go down to about three point nine in two thousand and eighteen. On the California side, it's actually a much better news because California is forecasted to grow faster than the U.S. economy in two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and eighteen. And it's also expected to have a continued growth specifically in housing. The median home price in California is about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That covers entire California. So it, you know, it, it covers the Beverly Hills, the Motestley area and the San Bernardino. It's about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This is a value that went up by about seven point eight percent from two thousand and sixteen, but we are only expecting about three percent growth in two thousand and eighteen. As we all know, the tax reform has some mixed reviews in terms of the impact of it to the housing, changes in the application of mortgage interest, but also the impact of the need for housing in California with the expected job growth. As we all know, with the economy growing, it is expected also to have more job creations in the area. We are also expecting taxable sales to increase this year to about three, two point one percent. And unemployment, even though it's a little bit higher than the U.S. unemployment, it's at four point six employment, unemployment rate, which is still much lower when you compare that to back in two thousand and ten where it was at twelve point two percent. On the Sonoma County side, there are some unknown factors impacting the revenue side based on the Prop sixty-four. And as we all know, the Sonoma fires also has an impact on the housing, issues about inventory and issues about affordability. The Cattati median home price is about five hundred and thirty-eight thousand compared to a Sonoma County home, which is about six hundred and fifteen thousand. Conservatively, Cattati home prices are expected to grow to about three percent in two thousand and eighteen. With all that, I would like to go over the first fund and that it will be the general fund. So with the general fund, we are, as of mid-year, we are at approximately about three point eight million, which is equivalent to about fifty-four percent of our budget and that is eleven percent higher than the prior year. And in this particular table, you can see that property tax had gone up about fifty-seven percent and sales tax is at fifty-two percent at mid-year. And this is a reflection of the continuous increase in valuation of home prices in Cattati as well as the increase in sales in, you know, that we receive, sales tax that we receive, both from Bradley Burns and Mesri G. To be more specific, we actually receive about eight hundred and forty-seven thousand of property taxes at mid-year compared to last year's of about eight thirty-one. I actually just recently received a letter from the county as of last night and it was in regards to the great inflow of additional payments made because of the tax reform. When we received the money, it was received as of this. Uh, when we received the money, it was received as of December tenth valuation or receipts. But because of the tax reform, people are, are actually going to the county and making payments that we receive, the county received about hundred-and-twenty-million dollars of secured property taxes. This is an increase of about twelve percent. So, uh, the letter specifies that the money could be received in the next couple of weeks. So, this is good news, because we are in receipt of additional cash flow for the city. And, um, with that in mind, of course, because of this inflow of cash, there could be a lesser inflow of cash in the coming April, because most of the monies are being received right The second major revenue that we have is the sales tax, which is, when compared to last year, it has grown by about nine percent. And this current receipt of sales taxes represents about fifty-two percent of the budgeted amount. And it's mainly because of the improved sales and improved economy. And one major variance in the revenue is the revenues from other agencies. And I know we have budgeted about hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand dollars, but currently we only receive one-thousand-eight thirteen. And I just wanted to point that out, because I know you guys are looking at your tables, and that is one big variance. And it's only due to a timing. And we all know that the city had, uh, had an agreement with the Sonoma State University to provide services for dispatching system and all that. And, uh, it's just, uh, a contract service that is, uh, delayed, but money is still expected to be received in the future. To cover the, transfers in are normally, uh, uh, done when it's incurred, when it's needed. So transfers in this year is a bit lower than the prior year, but it's still reported at forty-five percent of the budget. Eventually, it will catch up at the end of the fiscal year, when all the revenues are received and all expenses are incurred to be reimbursed by those transfers. So as a general revenue recap, uh, overall, the general fund is on a better position than last year, and we are still on track, based on the budget. There are no changes, no recommendations for any changes on the budget this year. So moving right along on the expenditures for the current year, uh, we are at forty-three percent of the budget. Uh, most of the classification of expenses are on track with budget. And, uh, let me just point out that the debt and interest is a full payment for the entire fiscal year. We are not expecting any more additional expense, and therefore it's showing at ninety-eight And the expenditures by department, it's also lower than what is budgeted at mid-year. Pretty much, if there is a variance or a spike in the, uh, percentage, it's mostly because of some of the contractual services are paid earlier, or most of those work are done in the first half of the year. And definitely, there will be no additional costs associated towards the second half of the fiscal year. So it's mostly timing. Again, for this current presentation, there is no, uh, proposal from the admin services to adjust the budget this year. So with that, we had covered both the general fund revenues and expenses, and, uh, in summary, it's working on track. Revenues are much higher than expected and, uh, budgeted, and expenses are lower than budgeted this year, at mid-year. Going over with the enterprise funds, we are, let's start off first with just a generalization. Water revenues are at fifty percent of the budget. Expenses are at fifty-three percent of the budget for water. And for sewer revenues are at forty-six percent of the budget, and expenses at, are at forty-nine percent of the budget. To be more specific, the charges for services are at fifty percent. The connection fees is lagging a little bit behind, and it's mainly due to timing of new developments. Uh, you'll be seeing that in both the water fund and the sewer fund. Connection, uh, fees are associated with developments, and development comes with timing. So if there's a delay in the development, then that money will not be received. But again, we closely monitor all this revenues and making sure that we don't, uh, incur expenses if it's, uh, if there's not enough revenues coming in. So we either delay or, or defer, or we reassess the expense prior to moving forward with it. So even though it's a little bit low, um, uh, the operations, again, is mainly focused on, uh, prepayments of some expenses, or some contract services are being paid earlier in the first half, but are not, we're not expecting additional contract services to follow through at the end of the fiscal year. Again, for the moment, we are not proposing any changes in the water fund and representing it as is, given that the budget at mid-year appears to be on track. As we all know, that the water revenue had a little bit of a increase in the charges for services, and it's mainly because of the water usage. Compared to last year, uh, there were, uh, a, a great, uh, uh, a, a better rainfall last year compared to this year, and so, uh, there were, the, there, there is less use of irrigation water. Unlike this year, people are using more water, and, uh, the water usage, uh, eventually, uh, directly is proportioned to the, the, the increase in the charges, or the, the higher in charges for services are directly in relation to the use, the water usage. Again, both revenues and expenses for the water fund are tracking on budget this year, and no proposals from the admin services to actually change the budget. Specifically, uh, there are some line items, I think, on the operating uses of the, uh, the water. We, the equipment, we have purchased a vehicle. This is only a portion of the cost. The, the purchase of the equipment is actually broken down and, and allocated to three funds, general fund, water fund, and, and, uh, the sewer fund. Capital improvements are, it's a little bit higher, because, again, it's about a timing wherein some of the expenses are incurred in the first year, in the first half of the year, but later on, once the project is completed, there's no additional costs associated with that. And transfers, as we all know, transfers are made when it is incurred and when there is a need. So transfers are on the need basis. And debt payment, it's, uh, there are two payments, and we're showing part of the, a partial payment at mid-year. So moving right along on the sewer fund, um, charges for services are, again, a little bit higher than the budgeted amount, at fifty-five percent. Same reasoning and, uh, you know, for, uh, you know, with water fund. The connection fees are, again, we're talking about some of the, uh, the, the developments are either in the process to be developed, and it's just about a timing. Right now, as of this moment, we still need to reassess the timing of those developments. And we would bring those back to the council, uh, as we, uh, move forward with the, uh, upcoming fiscal year eighteen-nineteen budget. But for now, we're not seeing any changes on the development fees, uh, uh, in terms of its timing. But most of those development fees are, uh, connection fees are related to the development of the projects. And again, given that we are, uh, managing and being prudent in, in making sure that , uh, any expenses are well-funded by the revenues that we receive in the current year. Same with the water fund. The equipment is covers with the equipment purcha- the, the vehicle purchase and capital improvements. Again, those are, there are so many, uh, projects that are in line, and, uh, that will take place towards the second half, uh, the ca- of the fiscal year. And some of those projects are listed in here, the, uh, Saint Joseph Way main replacement, the sewer opscata system, the flow monitoring update. And some of these expenses, uh, some of these projects are to be determined, uh, and assessed as they move forward in the coming months. With that, uh, I just want to say that based on the first two quarters of the year, uh, budget for twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen is on track. The city staff will continue to update the council for any forecasting changes deemed necessary. And the city staff are committed to exercise prudence and integrity in the management of public funds and provide transparent accountability for the use of it. So with that, I complete my presentation for the mid-year. I'll pass it on to Damon to cover the long-range financial plan.
So, um, sorry, I would actually suggest if there's any questions on the mid-year, we probably just, um, have that now.
All right. Then I'm gonna start with the council and see if you have any questions in the mid-year. And unsurprisingly, I'm gonna be starting over my left.
Sorry. I do have one question on there. It shows the interest earnings, and it shows the bu- budget amounts, and yet the actuals are zero. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yes.
It's probably another timing thing, but...
Yeah, uh, we, we normally try to do, uh, an interest earning. Uh, the, the interest earnings are being allocated, uh, but given the, the, the time period that we are focused on a few things, that has been delayed in getting it entered, or, uh, journaled, as we call it, journaled into the, uh, fund itself. But yeah, they are being monitored, and there are, there are, every fund that has a cash balance earns, uh, interest. And they will be eventually allocated at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you, Ann. I also want to just thank you for having this report for us so early in the mid-year. I know typically, we haven't seen them that, that early, so I truly appreciate it being around the mid-year.
Anybody else with a question for staff? Well, I'm, did you have one? I'm sorry, I'm with you, Susan, I have one, a quick one, too. Uh, and this is probably an easy one. Packet page one oh-one, under general fund expenditures, uh, budget versus mid-year by department. Under community development, it's a little high at sixty-nine percent. And I believe you mentioned something about contract expansions being high. And I also wanted to ask if it has anything to do with construction or any temporary disruption from that as well.
Oh, I was just, I was just gonna say, um, actually, there's, there's a couple of things. On the, on the revenue side, um, the revenues are higher than, than we anticipated at this time of year due to the construction and permitting activities. So even though we're not, that wasn't specifically your question.
No.
In, in that department, the revenues are higher than anticipated. On the expenditure, so there was the anticipated, um, it was anticipated that we'd have a building official, staff person. Um, we haven't been able to fill that vacancy, so we've been using contract services instead. So what you're seeing is really an artifact of that. Here's, you know, of using contract services instead of...
Now, does that front-load a little, too? Do we save a little in the wrong then by not having hired that person with the extra benefits permanently, too?
Um, front, no, it, I don't, it doesn't really front-load, because it's all fee for service. I mean, you know, developers or builders pay for permit fees and the, I, I know there, you know, he does have some counter-hours as well, but it's largely, a lot of it's offset with those fees.
Very good. It's the only question I have. I just will also say, I appreciate the clarity of this, as well as the timeliness and earliest in this. Again, very clear, very helpful. All right, with none, then I'm going to, do we want to open this, why don't we open this in two parts? We'll give you two bites at this. How's that sound? As long as we don't make it too terribly long. If you'd like to speak on this one, please do, and then we'll come back and have the second part.
Okay. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Berge.
You know, I, I also agree that, uh, that we finally have a mid-year budget review in January. But I have been the only one who really was demanding that it be done this time of year. The council had been silent the last few years when we were getting the mid-year review back in April. And I insisted, you needed to get back on track. And it's nice to see us being back on track. But you, as a council, you can demand your mid-year budget review at mid-year. And I don't know how it got away from you, but maybe you need to ask yourself that. The economy is on fire, so naturally, it would make sense that our city budget is on I'd like to ask staff if they can point out where in the budget are the, um, bond payments on the police station. We're probably at year fifteen about right now. And, um, I'd like some clarification on where we are with the police station bond. And, um, I still think that we're underestimating future expenditures. I still think we keep kicking this can down the road. Even when the scenario looks rosy, we're still kicking the can down the road. We're not saving for and anticipating future capital expenses for these buildings, for building replacements. We're not properly estimating for future road repair and so forth. And, um, this is gonna come by, back and bite you. These are the good years. You need to put that in the budget. So the budget realistically is not as healthy as what we're seeing here tonight, because the, the reality of our future expenditures are not on paper.
Thank you, Mr. Berge. Mr. Kirschman, did you want to speak?
I just wanted to confirm something I thought I heard. A friend of mine told me some time ago that Sonoma State probably wouldn't, uh, make good on the contract, i.e., pay for the services. And somehow, I thought that's what I heard at the opening of the discussion, that as yet, funds haven't been forthcoming for the, uh, services of dispatch. Is that correct, or did I mishear that?
We'll get back to that after public comment.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else want to speak on this? Seeing none, thank you, then we'll bring it back here. Uh, could you clarify the issue around Sonoma State? I believe there's a delay in that moving forward, but I don't think they're, to use the common term, stiffing us at this point, are they?
Uh, and it's a complicated, it's a complicated process. You can't just flip a switch and start dispatching. So they had to join the Public Safety Consortium, JPA, which, um, they have just recently done, and that allows them to get the equipment and software they need to actually connect. And so there's infrastructure, we're working through the infrastructure, um, requirements right now.
Actually, you know, that's a good point. The infrastructure is easy. Joining a JPA is a nightmare. Uh, sometimes. Usually, it's pretty complex, and so I'm not surprised. Thank you for that. All right, so then we are to our long-range forecast. Mr. Obit?
Thank you, council, um, and mayor. So, um, let me get into the first slide here. So, uh, I'll just, uh, state some of the obvious, I guess, and just disclaimers upfront. So Cotati, as you know, we don't exist, um, in a vacuum. We're subject to all the same, uh, state and regional, uh, economic factors affecting everybody else. And, um, these, these type of forecasts are based on the best available information today. And, um, just by their nature, they're long-range, and so, um, they're, they're expected to sort of dampen out any ups and downs, you know, any minor up and downs in the economy. So what we're looking at is long-term, um, trends in terms of percentages on whether we're talking about revenues or expenditures. We're talking about multi-year trends, as opposed to, you know, you heard Norm say, in this last year, we had eleven percent spike, but if you stretch it over ten years, it dampens that out. And so, that's, so for long-range forecasts, just to kind of frame it, that's, that's what we look at, is more long-term trends than year-to-year type performance. And, um, also, in terms of, uh, in terms of risk, there could be another, um, significant economic recession, which nobody knows about, and so that's not built into a forecast like this. And there always could be, um, the state or regional legislative or tax changes, which could affect it. For example, the new gas tax, um, measure, there's talk about, you know, a petition ending up in November to try to repeal it. So you never know, you know, and that could take revenue away. And, um, and, and so it just so happened that, um, that we were, uh, listening to Michael Coleman talk, who I think everyone knows, League of California Cities. He's, he's their, like, their tax guru, Ann. This may be his famous, his, maybe his famous last words, but he said that the state has done just about everything it can do to local agencies in terms of stealing money, so there's not much more they can take. But we'll see if that holds true or not. And it also, one last thing, it doesn't assume any new significant sources of revenue. So we just don't know, you know, um, if there's a significant source of revenue that comes on, how that affects our long-term forecast at this point. So we're forecasting our existing sources of revenue and, um, existing expenses, and that's what we're looking at. So, um, on the revenue side, so again, over the long-term, this is an eleven-year forecast. Sales tax is showing, um, a one-point-nine-five percent growth per year. And I should caveat that by saying that's the, the Bradley Burns, um, tax, because Measure G, as you know, doesn't go for eleven years. It would sunset before that. Um, property tax, um, three-point-three- Property tax, 3.36 percent, and other revenues are forecast at 2.5 percent. This will be a, this next item is something that'll be, you'll notice it in the chart, which I'll point out, is development reimbursement. We've been averaging $300,000 a year most recently, the last several years. And this is development, developers, you know, per state law, they come in and they submit applications, and we can't provide free service to people, so we charge them for our time to review their permits and their development applications. And so it's really a staff reimbursement for time. That's been averaging $300,000. But for this long-range forecast, we're assuming 150,000. Again, this is over the long-term, because there will be years where there'll be very little development activity, and there'll be years when there's more. But over the long-term, that's the assumption. And so the combined total revenue growth, when you kind of consolidate all these different factors, is a little under 3 percent, at 2.8. And there's also transfers into the general fund, and Norm talked a little bit about transfers. So one important caveat to make here is, these are, these are sources of revenue that we don't control, right? They come from other places. And because they come from other places, they could be turned off without our ability to change that. So it's just a, just a risk factor that I'll just put out there, just to let you know that this is not, funds generated locally, this is funds that come from either regional or state sources. And gas tax is a state tax that is assumed to grow at 2.5 percent. And the new gas tax, which we talked about, is also assumed to grow at 2.5 percent. And the new gas tax, as I mentioned earlier, with the caveat that, you know, you know, one of the, you know, California is one of the initiative states, and so you never know how that might turn out in the future. But as of now, that's assumed in the forecast. Measure M, that's the county-wide transportation tax, and that's assumed to grow at 2.5 percent. It does expire in 2024. So that is forecast to grow at 2.5 through 2024, and then it goes away. It assumes that there, in other words, it assumes that there's not a reauthorization of Measure M. And it also assumes the COPS grants continues at $100,000 per year. And not so long ago, we had two COP grants. We had a federal one and a state one. The federal one evaporated. The state one is still with us, and the state makes noises when the economy goes down about taking it away. But so far, it's remained in place. So here's what that all looks like on a chart. The blue part is all of the ongoing sources of revenue. The green band is the transfers in. So things like, you know, gas tax, even though it can, even though it's dedicated for transportation purposes, so there's a street department, like, you know, paving and road maintenance, that type of activity, it does, it does contribute to the general fund expenditures, because it's a general fund department, but it transfers in. And then the red part of the chart on top is Measure G. And you can see, 2023, it starts going down precipitously, and that is because that's the sunset date. And the reason why it doesn't just go straight down is because the way the fiscal years work and the way the tax was authorized, there's some carryover and then trailing, just trailing revenue in the next year, and then it goes to zero the year after that. And I mentioned this before on some level, but I just will say that the expenses assume, so we took our 1718 budget.
Mr. Obed, I wonder if I could ask you to hold that thought encapsulated so perfectly there for just a second. It's 10 o'clock. To continue, we need to have a motion to continue if we want to continue. So I'll look to council and see what your direction is.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do you have a second?
Houston.
Then we have a motion and second from this side, Councilmember Harvey Vice-Mayor Del Lasso, for continuing the meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that carries. Sorry for the interruption. Please continue.
No, it was a good interruption. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so on the expense side, just to state in a little more detail what I said earlier, it assumes the 1718 budget allocation and projects that out in the future. So it doesn't make any assumptions about staff being added or subtracted. Personnel costs are projected to grow at 3.3 percent per year. This is everything, right? This is all salary benefits of all types. And it's, you know, the primary drivers, as you probably can imagine, are things that we don't control, like healthcare costs, that all businesses have to deal with, and also retirement costs too. And then other expenses, these are like materials and supplies and things like that. Contract services are projected to grow at 5 percent per year. And so the overall expense growth is 4.28 percent per year. And the thing I'll just point out is that the expenses are projected to grow slightly faster than the revenues, and you'll see that in the chart here. So this, the revenue, this, let me kind of unpack this, because it's a little bit complicated until you understand what this all is. So the green line on top is the revenues that include the transfers in. The red line below that is operating expenses, and you can see that they slightly, they get closer together slightly as the years go on, and that's just because the growth percentages, the expenses grow a little higher than the revenues. And then the red line represents when Measure G expires, just to, it's just a way to graphically show clearly why they suddenly change, why the green line or the blue line suddenly changes direction and goes way below the red line. And this is, this is a chart of operational expenses, right? This doesn't include any capital costs. This is just operational expenses. So Measure G represents about $2 million per year. So that shortfall you're seeing after Measure G expires is about $2 million, and it gets slightly larger as you go out in the years. And then, so the bar chart or column chart below that shows the, sort of, it's the excess revenue that's left after you fund your operations. So you can see, and, you know, before Measure G, you have excess revenue to presumably, to do things, I mean, to do whatever the council desires to do, presumably capital projects, equipment purchases, things like that. And then after Measure G expires, then it goes in the negative, which basically means that you'd have to somehow close that operational gap. And so now I'll move on to the equipment and infrastructure pieces, because like I mentioned in that chart, that's all operational only. So this next chart you'll see assumes an annual inflation of 5 percent per year. And I can tell you, on the construction side, we're seeing, at least more recently, much higher percentages than that. It seems like everything's coming in way over budget in terms of bids and costs. But again, this is a long-term average. And it assumes that we're investing $1 million per year in streets work. And so to put that in context, to maintain the current PCI, it's about, the current pavement condition index, it's about $700,000 per year. And so this is additional $300,000 to maintain plus start moving the pavement in the positive direction. Park equipment facilities, $50,000 per year. Again, a long-term average in term for replacing facilities and playgrounds and things like that in parks. City building maintenance, $100,000 per year, and then vehicles and equipment replacements out of the general fund, $75,000 per year. And so this, the stacked bar, the stacked bar chart you see are the various costs. So blue is street paving cost. The red part of the bar is park equipment. Green is building repairs, and the vehicle equipment is the purple on the top. And you can see that as they go up, as the columns get taller over the years, it's because of inflationary factors. And the red line that's shown superimposed on that is the available funding to fund those things. So again, this doesn't assume, like I said earlier in the presentation, no new significant sources of revenue come online. This is just existing sources of revenue, just projected into the future. And once Measure G goes away in 2023, 24, you see it just drop to zero. And then you're just dealing with operations at that point, trying to fund operations. And then, so this is, this is taking operations and putting the capital need in it. So this is operations plus capital. And you can see to the left of that vertical line, when we still have Measure G, that is, so that's what we've been talking about, and I'll use the little mouse here. This part right here is what we've been talking about in terms of economic development, trying to, and we, you know, we still feel that that's very manageable with economic development and, you know, to fulfill all our operational and capital needs. But then after Measure G goes away, it jumps to, and this is operations plus capital costs or capital need, I should say, it jumps to a little under four and then goes up from there. So the takeaway is that we, fiscally, we're really not any different than anyone else. It's just that we're smaller, so we tend to fill things sooner than the larger agencies. And the challenges we're dealing with, I can tell you in all the different, you know, city managers I talk to and different conferences I go to, it's all, it's all the same thing. Everyone's dealing with the exact same stuff. It's just, you know, every city's trying to, trying to find their way forward through it. And, you know, it's, I think the takeaway that we, that we get consistently is that, is that the, is that you shouldn't be holding your breath for the state to come help you because you might turn blue and fall over, and we don't want that to happen. So, you know, all the cities that are, that are successful are, are dealing with these challenges head-on and figuring it out locally on how to, how to bridge these financial issues. And economic development is critical. Economic development is critical, and like I mentioned in that slide earlier, it's expected to enhance infrastructure programs, which would only, you know, to the degree that we have economic development, the more of it we have, the more rapidly we can start addressing things, you know, capital needs and equipment needs and things like that. It's just a matter of pace, right? And Measure G continues to be core or critical to our core operations and infrastructure programs. So with that, I'd be, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, so, excuse me. So I'll come back to the council and see if he has any questions for staff on this part of the presentation.
No questions.
Questions? It's very quiet. It's funny, after 10 o'clock, everybody gets a little slower. So I did want to ask if you could just expound a little bit on who or what process we use to do the long-term revenue assessments, because obviously there's always some understandable vagueness and movement within those. But at the same time, I'd just like to be filled in a little on the background and how we do that, because obviously that's kind of a black art.
Yeah, so I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to Norm, who's much more of an expert at this. It's kind of his bag. But so generally speaking, a lot of the major sources on the revenue side, all the major sources of revenue, those being property tax and sales tax, we, we as well as, I think, the vast majority of cities in California use professional forecasters that forecast tax revenues, and then we apply our, you know, any judgment that we feel is needed for our local conditions. But they're, they do this, they live, eat, and sleep this stuff, and so they're, they're very proficient in doing that. And then some of the other revenue sources, and on the expenditure side, we look at, you know, past performance, and we try to project out in the long run what that might look like, but we try to be a little conservative so that we don't dramatically overshoot or undershoot anything.
So the basic foundation of the long-term projections are using, is basically using the current revenues and expenditures that are known to us. We are not including any variables that we foresee unless it's a reality or anticipated to happen eventually. And, but assumptions that are related to revenues are something that we currently receive, like property taxes, sales taxes, and any developments that we can foresee as a factor in projecting future revenues, we include those. In assessing expenses, as what Damon had presented this evening, is basically using the current expenses with no anticipation of changes even in terms of personnel. So we are being conservative in a way by saying that, you know, we are just trying to focus on expenses that we truly know. So should the council decide to direct us for additional capital cost and, or increasing personnel, those things are not there reflected yet in those projections. So basically, you know, the projections are reflecting the current activities of the city and nothing else.
Okay.
And then moving forward from there.
So basically, it's outside expertise, local experience applied, and a conservative bite at it with some and no one's not factored in.
Correct. Also with the application of what the economic outlook. So we don't really project and say, we're going to increase the property taxes to about 7 to 8 percent, knowing that in the long run, it's, there's going to be highs and lows, ups and downs, and we wanted to be able to maintain a certain growth without really feeling the impact of the highs and lows. So it's a slow, steady growth, knowing that there could be as high as 10 percent in one year, but all of a sudden, there's a recession. So we are looking at averaging it to about, conservatively, to about 2 percent, 3 percent.
Right. I look at sales tax this year, we're looking at 9 percent, but over time, we're looking at a little bit under 2 percent probably as we take it out. So good, that was helpful.
Right. And it's also because you don't know how the economy is going to function or impact the spending of the citizens. You know, when people feel that their home prices or their household value is high, they feel rich and they can spend. But when their home values are down, all of a sudden, they're panicking and say, you know, I need to tighten up my belt. You know, so it's just a confidence in the economy. It's also in terms of how one factor impacts the attitude of spending or impacts the attitude of housing needs or affordability and all that. So all those things together are all kind of mixed in as we project, moving forward from that very base actual activity of revenues and expenses.
Good. Well, thank you. That answers my question.
I have one question, if I may.
Please.
Thank you. Mayor Lemon, so none of these projections take into consideration Prop 64? Is that correct?
That's correct, because it's, the revenue's unknown to us right now.
Okay. And then because of the uncertainty, we don't know what the other negative impacts we might feel from the Sonoma County fires.
Correct. Actually, when you think about it, the projections of the revenues are very conservative in a way that we only include revenues that we know that are something that we could really rely on to cover for some of the expenses. And Prop 64 is a good revenue source. We all know that. But we, on the federal level, that is still an illegal drug. So, or, you know, so we don't know what the federal level would work in terms of the California level. So, and also not knowing firsthand what that impact would be. And you are right, with that new business revenue or new revenue, there is also a public safety impact. So those things, we, it's hard to include those in the projections, not even holding a certain cash level of money that we could actually receive and say, yeah, let's use this number and project that from there on. And that is difficult. Thank you.
Very good. With that, if there's no more questions, I'm going to open it to public comment. Ms. Alderman, did you want to go first?
I'll take this lady's first. First, you forgot to open it up for open, for public comment of the extension of time at 10 o'clock. I really start deteriorating now. So anyway, all of this, I sent you guys a bunch of Excel charts and everything that It's, I believe or not, I started out as an accountancy major. I was the youngest income tax preparer in California one year when I had to wait for my February birthday. And I, if you gave me your W-2, told me your refund you wanted, I could work it backwards. I never did. I never did. But, so it's what variables you put in. He's, one thing is assuming 5% growth inflation. The biggest expense is the police department. It's actually went down, I went back to 2007 was, it was at 3,000. It's gone down to 2,000, I mean, 3 million. It's gone down to 2.4 million and it's up to, up to 2.8 million. That's not 5% growth. So your main, your main one driver of the cost is not going to be 5% inflation, which over 10 years would be 50%. So that's going to skew all your numbers if you don't put in the correct variables and the correct, this also assumes expenses as they are. It doesn't, cost trimming or anything like that. It assumes at the current level, not making any exemptions. And also, and your average growth on that is 5%, but your, your income revenue, the highest you project is three. So there's the 2%. Anything you put, if you put those variables in, everything's going to look dire. These aren't, it, it needs to go back and see what the expenses were empirically for, like the police department, and see is that actual ones instead of making a general 5% inflation and stuff like that on expenses. So that needs to be done. And it also shows you're becoming more and more reliant on sales tax, one of the graphs. You went up from 48%, I think, to 67% or something over the last year. You need to stop relying on sales tax for your budget. It's not fair to measure, for, to rely on Measure G for basic operational. People aren't spending an extra 1% to fund the government of the city as it is. They're expecting more. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alderman. Mr. Berish.
I was on the city council in 2009 where the city manufactured a budget emergency, manufactured a budget crisis. What was, which was in reality, a crisis in leadership. Now, Diane Thompson told us and told you, those of you who came to the meetings, that in fact, Roanoke Park was in a much better situation in 2009 than Cattati was, because they had actually saved for a rainy day, had a few million dollars in the bank, which got them through the recession two to three years better off than we did and was able to soften out the blow of the recession. Cattati wasn't that lucky. Cattati saw everything rosy, nothing was going to end. Everybody's houses was going to make more money each year than they made, earned in their income. And then we got hit, flat-footed, without having enough revenues to make it through 2009. And the rest is history. As far as Measure G is concerned, you still fail to look at the fact that when Measure G fails or, or sunsets, we could see a real increase in business revenue and taxation here in Cattati. Because we all know, when you lower taxes, you're going to stimulate growth. If you've watched what's happened this last year, even the, even the talk of a national tax cut spurred this economy without Congress or Senate ever even voting on a tax cut. Just the talk of it. So even though Measure G has brought you in X amount of funds, the elimination of Measure G is going to spark all kinds of activity and business opportunities. It will be beating down the door at the planning department when that happens. That's not in your projections. Also in your projections, you don't anticipate the need for more police officers on our streets. You're staying at a constant level. You're not anticipating more parks that you need to purchase or improve. I saw the $50,000 fee for improving parks, but not purchasing new parks. There's no money on that budget for the Falletti Park Ranch, a park project, which is going to be millions of dollars in buildings and improvements. And things done right, and then things done over again. And then this talk about the redevelopment agency and the state taking away local money. That was state money. It was never Cattati's money. And this council and this city has never gotten that through their head, that this city operated in the trust of the state of California to operate that redevelopment agency. It was not our money. It was none of our money that they took back. Now, I'd like an answer, before I leave tonight, what the status is on the police station's bond payments. I asked for it once. Can I get an answer? Where are we on the $6.9 million bond measure that with interest and principal is over $23 million? Where we are on that with this budget? Please.
Thank you, Mr. Berish. Anybody else want to speak before I close public comment? I'm kind of looking, I'm not seeing anything. All right, just, never hurts to check. I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to staff. We did have a question about a bond payment, rough idea of what period of time we're at in that.
Yes, we do. We actually just approved the recognized obligation payment schedule with the successor agency. And that includes the bond payments that were under the former redevelopment agency. And one is due 3031, and the other one, I believe, is 3033, 3035. So we're talking about 15, 17 years away from, you know, you know, roughly around those two bonds. And yes, those are paid directly through the successor agency. And any debt payments associated with those are guaranteed to be paid through the successor agency through ROPS.
And I'll also, just for ease of reference, that's packet page 15, in case you don't want to look at it.
Beautiful. Thank you. Thank you for that update.
It's not a factor to be considered in any of these projections, because as part of a dissolution of the redevelopment, that is an agreed upon, you know, that the outstanding debts related to the former redevelopment are to be covered under the recognized obligations, payment schedules.
And that's very good, because a lot of places didn't wind up quite that well in some issues and concerns. So thank you for that. All right, I'm going to bring it back to council, see if we have any more questions or discussion before we move from this. Anybody?
No questions.
Well, if you've got something else, this is the time to do it.
Well, it's interesting that it was brought up about 2007 and 2008 and how the expenses are different. Yes, they were different. And as many of you will know, the reason that the expenses were very different is we worked with staff because we had to have reductions in salaries and things. So it's easier to look back and look at actuals and see what it looks like. It is, I don't know whether you call it an art or a science, it is a little bit different going forward. You have to lay out the assumptions. And I appreciate that you laid out what they are, so anybody looking at the numbers knows what, what those assumptions are. And as you pointed out, if any of those assumptions change, of course, the trajectory of any of these lines will change. So that's sort of, it's just a point in time today, looking with these assumptions and what it, what it might look like. And that can change at any time. It can change next week. You know, some new legislation could happen, some other disaster, you know, anything could happen. So it's really just sort of giving you a look. And as far as being reliant on, on sales tax, well, I think that the voters of Cattati, what they said was they wanted their funds to stay here locally. As was pointed out, you know, we don't get money from the state, rightfully so. If people want services, I think it was the late Robert Coleman said, and I, you'll, you'll get it better than I will. But he said, you know, vending machine of services, you either want them or you don't want them. So we either want services or we don't. There's no such thing as a free lunch. And I think what the citizens have said thus far, the services that we're providing, our services, that they want and they're happy to contribute money that stays here. As we all know, if we participate in anything at the state level or the county level, we get such a minuscule proportion of that money back. You know, we, we get just a tiny proportion. In lots of cases, we get a tenth of what, what people pay into. So yeah, people can complain about their property taxes, and they can even complain about the, the general sales tax. But in reality, what we get to, to provide services for people is a small amount of that. So you kind of always have to look at, at, at the big picture. So I appreciate that being brought out, but, but the reality is, you know, we get what we get. And if we don't like it, we have to do something different, which is sort of what the citizens, sort of what the citizens did.
Yeah. Anything, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Just very briefly, again, appreciate the report. It was really great to have here in January. And the other council member, Harvey, brought up, you know, some valid points related to sales tax issues. And like with Measure G, that's money that's also coming from other people who do not live in Cattati that will then, we reap the benefits at whatever level, but we reap the benefits of that. So I just wanted to point that out, too.
And I'm going to look over here, see if we have any comments.
I was just going to say, I think it's great. Revenue's up, expenses are down. What more do you need? Secondly, the fact that we have a finance director, administrative, admin director now in place for two years?
Three years.
Three years now? Now we've got to the point where things are cleaned up and we can actually look at the mid-year projections at mid-year, where previously, we had issues with personnel in that particular arena. So, nice job, guys.
All right, then it's to the mayor. Yeah, can you agree, once anybody brings a report that says for the current budget year expenses are down, revenues are up slightly? That's a good place to start a presentation. I think you'll always do well with that. Seriously speaking, no surprises, even with the long-term projections. It shows why Measure G is here, and it's good to see that it's doing the job that it was intended to do. It makes, it gives some clarity on that, so that's helpful. One thing I did want to suggest, I know, because the big issue of this is revenue. And there's a lot of different ways that cities get revenue. We've talked about this a few times. And I know that it varies dramatically, even locally. A lot of other cities get revenue in different ways. And I wonder if, as we move into our budget workshops, it might be good to have, without adding too much to the meeting, a short comparison of how that works and where we stand, because that'll add even some more clarity to our particular financial situation, both the good, the bad, and what potentials we have.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Good. I think that, I think that, I'm looking to see some nods here, but I think that fits right in. Because we've talked about that, but we've never really quantified it in some recent years in any detail. And as we start looking at long-term projections, that would be good to lay alongside it. So, all right, thank you. So this is just to receive and discuss. I think you have any input directions. So with that, we are to the city managers' report.
All right. Thanks, mayor, members of the council. So a couple of things. I think you might have, well, I think you know already about the photo contest, but I'll plug it again since it's out there. And we're currently running a photo contest, and we want to see what, what you love about Cattati and what makes it unique to you. So we have a link on our website, where people can email these photos in. And the winners could be featured on our website, banners, newsletters, and maybe many, many more things. We'll see. So anyway, it's on the website headline, so you can see the link there and, and partake. I should say they're family-friendly photos. And then also in the, just on some recreation news, we are currently showing a piece of community art at the city hall that will eventually be auctioned off with the proceeds benefiting victims of the fires in October. And this painting was done at the December shop and stroll, and it was done by community members, so, and everyone that walked by added a little bit to this painting. And you can stop by and take a look. It's actually mounted on the wall. If you go out the door right to the right, it's a two-part painting, this little thing there describes how, how this thing came to be and all the details on it. And then also, on January 16th, we had our Star Kids Productions Free Musical Theater Workshop for children's ages eight and up. And we had 32 kids there, so it was busy. And we'll be offering two more free workshops for the smaller children, ages five to seven, on January 30th and February 6th, from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m. at the community center. And these free workshops are a great way to try out our classes and decide if they, if they want to enroll for these productions. And in the spring, the production is Cinderella Jr. And they're perfect for kids that have an interest in acting, singing, and dancing. And no experience is required, and all participants get to go to the final show at the end of the season. So even if you're horrible singing like me, you can still make it in, which is nice. And then February 10th, we're going to host our first Sweethearts Fairy Tale Dance for children and their guardians from 5:00 to 8:30 p.m. in the Cattati Room. And we're going to have a photo booth, a fairy princess, and prints, craft station refreshments, and plenty of music to dance, to dance to. And the event is sure to be a hit and a great way for parents to spend a special night with their children. So it's like a father-daughter dance, although updated for the 21st century. And then on February 14th and February 17th, we'll be hosting two special Valentine's Day additions of the Parents Night Out from 5:00 to 7, 5:00 to 10 p.m. And this is where parents can bring their children to the community center for pizza dinner and a night of fun and games while mom and dad get to go out and, it says celebrate here, but they don't have to celebrate, just have fun, you know, go have dinner or whatever. Celebrate sounds a little extreme. You don't want to celebrate you dropping your kids off, but, you know, having, having a date night, right? And so to register for classes or for more information, you can always visit the city website or call Ashley Wilson at 665-4222, or A. Wilson at cattatycity.org. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Obed? Looking very good. Then we are to city council member reports. I'm going to start over here to my right and see if anybody would like to jump in and take a stab at this.
I want to be everybody's favorite and have nothing to report out this week.
Nicely done.
I would just report that the Chamber Commerce Annual Dinner was a success, recognizing the police department and Rancho Adobe Fire Department and Stephanie. I thought it went very well. And I'll be going to Willett's on Thursday and Friday. I'm so excited. Super eight. Apparently, the Rich Carlton was sold out.
I didn't realize they had one.
Right. And that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Want to look down here?
Yes, I agree with Councilmember Moore, the chamber dinner was, was really a lot of fun, and it was nice to see so many local folks getting awarded. And even, even the fire, firemen had to come in and come out, and they were back in time to get their rewards. So that was, that was pretty nice, too. It was a very nice turnout from them. I'm sure others will talk about it, but I also attended the Falletti Ranch study session. It was very, very well done. Thank you, staff, for doing that. There was a lot of good input. There was a lot of people, and it was really well done, and we appreciate the input. And last but not least, I did attend the Waste Management Agency meeting. I brought up the polystyrene. But the other thing, a teaser of more to come, is that at the end of the meeting, the director told us that although they hadn't looked at them yet, because they just got all of them, we actually received 12 proposals for compost. So that's pretty exciting. There's a, really a lot of interest. So they will start going through those and ranking them and rating them and all of that. But 12 is a really good number, so.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah, it sounds like those proposals are piling up. Okay, a couple of quick things. So I agree with comments on the Falletti Ranch meeting. That was great. I mean, a lot of good input, at least four large sheets of paper with bulleted points, written really small, by the way, Damian. And the chamber dinner was fun, as always. I'm going to report out on a mid-December meeting from Sonoma County Ag Preservation Open Space. And just two brief items. One was Bill Keen, the general manager, reported out on what the staff had been doing during and post-fire. There's 27 employees. 20 of them were actually evacuated from their homes. One person lost a home, one person had a home damage. But staff kicked in, like I think a lot of other jurisdictions countywide, they actually worked 12,000 hours as volunteers to gather data. And some of their to gather data, and some of their, I can't remember what LiDAR stands for, but just, it's this radar thing from the sky. Okay, let's go with that. And what was so critical was all the data that Ag and Open Space had collected the last several years with LiDAR, they were able to share that information and pinpoint homes, homes that were lost, homes that weren't lost. So there was some really valuable, because they were doing that for vegetation. I mean, it gives you, it gives you data down to like, now it's like square inches of what type of vegetation is growing in there, which is important from a grazing standpoint and also from the standpoint of protecting open space. About 7,000 acres of district land, there was 35 different properties, were impacted by the fire, and it's just, it's, it's ongoing restoration work that they'll be doing. And the other item is the matching grant program for 2018. We were going to revisit all of the criteria because I felt there were some criteria that needed editing, and it was a little confusing for some of the jurisdictions. We're not going to get time to do that, and so from January till April 30, it is open this year. Remember, this is a program that's every other year. We typically have around two, two and a half million dollars that goes out to different jurisdictions or agencies to do projects in various areas in the county, but this year because of the fire and fire-affected properties will have a higher priority, but we're going to put $4 million to this, so, and the supervisors have already agreed, so there's a chunk of money out there. And that's it.
Super. Yeah, I would well expect a lot of that might go to the fire areas, and rightfully so. So, okay, let's hear a few things. Like my colleagues, I went to the Fletti event, very well-run, good turnout, too, and some new faces, exactly what you want to see. I went to the Chainer Dinner and just wanted to give a shout-out thanks to Gerard Judasey, who was there as a customer, attending with his wife, but he noticed the barbecue team got a little backed up behind and was out there for about a half hour manning the grill. So Gerard made it happen, so a thanks to him, former chamber member. So lastly, I wanted to report on mayors and councilmembers academy in Sacramento. Last Tuesday, I came down here, we sat through planning together, something we don't normally do, because then Mr. Obit and I left and drove up to Sacramento to spend a few days there. And instead of just attending this time, I actually got to present along with Melanie Bagby of Cloverdale for the basics boot camp portion. So I have to laugh, I remember going there as new council members, and now nine years later, I'm sitting there saying, here's all the mistakes I made, and there's plenty of them, don't make those, and here's some of the things. It was very well-received evidently. They're, they're trying to invite us back, so that was all well and good. And I think one of the favorite analogies we gave was moving from an election, when you're competing against everybody, to all of a sudden you're sitting up here. You may still occasionally compete at times, but what you're really in is that something like, remember the old two-legged SAC races that people used to do at Fairs? You're either in a five or seven-member, seven-leg SAC race, and the only way you get to the end of it is somehow you manage to agree to run together to some degree. A lot of talk, it was actually well-received, and we got to also hear some pretty good presentations. Michael Coleman particularly in a financial matter was very interesting. We had a good representation, I felt, on legal powers and obligations, and we took also a look at new media, which of course is a huge and very interesting evolving thing and something that Sacramento's going to have to tackle someday, but until then, we'll just continue to have questions. So that's it, other than I would like to thank Mr. Obit for taking time from his busy schedule to go up there and do that, and there's a lot of benefit to both of us, but still, I appreciated that, so thank you. So let's see, with that, we are to public comment on non-action agenda items. You had your hand up first, all right. Ms. Alderman.
Okay, first with the city managers' report. A contest has first, second, third place, and usually has a prize. There's nothing there. It's, that's an asking for submissions. It's not a contest. You need to change the wording. The other is, you've mentioned Mr. Coleman, Michael Coleman, a few times tonight. He is the one who has said that your, when you do the Measure G reports, that your 1% you, chart you use is incorrect. I would like you to, if you're going to have that influence of Michael Coleman, you please make sure to have the 1% showing, it should show 2% together. 1% is the local, and 1% is one, and you take the 1% and don't show the other 1%, it's buried in local. So Michael Coleman said that was an incorrect one over a year ago, and you've never fixed it. Other things, future agenda items, we still need weed abatement. We still need tree management, fire hazards, especially West School has this big overhang of, we had a fire there, we, it's horrible. The tree maintenance of that street is really bad, and people need to be dealing with it. And lastly, you also, I'd like to see the effect of the 2% cap on sales tax on the fire district as a future agenda item because that's seriously harming them. If you guys are thinking you're going to have to 2023, you're going to keep, you're going to bankrupt the fire district. They're not going to be able to do any equipment, anything. They're, they've been bare bones for years, and you guys use up all Measure G, other than 1/4 of percent, they, they have option. So they, they are looking for a parcel tax. And that kind of stuff, you need to have your, know what impact you have on other agencies, and you're not seeming to get that by your fiscal policies. So I'm really tired, and I please next time ask at 10 o'clock whether people can go on. Thank you.
And thank you. Mr. Barrich, please approach.
I want to briefly, briefly speak on the city managers' report. It was a very good report. Always like them longer than shorter. There's a lot going on in the city that we're not hearing about, but I think it's because the city manager is trying to be respectful of people's time, but boy, you know, we, we the public need to know as much as possible about what's going on, what you're facing. Regarding his report, he talked about art and public art to some, some degree, and I want to remind you that the Athena statue downtown was originally there was supposed to be temporary, and the project was brought forth by Andre Moro and one of the art professors at Sonoma State, made a presentation claiming that those statues, that statue there would be replaced every so often with new statues. And I want you to go back and, and look at this, at the staff report on this, and we need an update downtown with the Athena statue and find out what, what Andre Moro plans to do about holding himself to his, his own word. Also, it's January, late January, and I can't help but think about the homeless in Katati as a future agenda item for you to, to consider. The homeless issue is an old one here in Katati, and it's very, very cold outside, it's very wet. You all know that this, this type of cold goes right through you, goes right through you. This is not my favorite time of the year, and I can only think of the homeless people that are out here on the streets and living in their cars in Katati, and in the bushes and in the creeks, near the creeks, and our thoughts have to be with them tonight. We have spent no money towards the homeless. We have nothing projected for the future of the homeless, and it can get very, very cold here. And I want to see you put this on a future agenda sometime in my lifetime, that we're going to do the humane thing, and we're going to have some type of support service for the homeless in Katati. I also agree with Lori Alderman that this weed abatement issue has been kicked around and ignored for years, and it needs to be addressed once and for all before properties are lost and lives are lost. And last but not least, given the fact that, of the, the fire storm that happened last year, as a future agenda item, I'd like you to consider what we can do to bring the CERT program back to Katati, which I don't think we ever had in Katati, which is the Community Emergency Response Team. And I'm a trained member of that team, and I'm on call at any moment to be contacted by the police department if they need traffic control or any other emergency services here in town in the event of a disaster. But we're not training these people anymore for CERT, and I would like you to consider on a future agendized item to what we can do, to see what we can do to bring the CERT program and certification program back to the county and into Katati. They can be indispensable help for the police department in the city.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it.
I'm wrapping right now, sir.
Thank you.
Indispensable in the event that you need a helping, helping hand in the, in the event of a disaster. Thank you.
And thank you. Looking, last call, seeing note takers. We're going to close public comment and come back here. Let's see, and we already. And let me borrow that for just a second. Supplemental information received after the agenda was posted. Do we have any city manager Obit?
I want to ask a question.
Please ask a question.
On the, the item on the fire department and the sales tax, I know I've done a little bit of research on this, and I know that you have also, but it keeps coming up over and over again, so if you could address that.
Yeah, so special purpose districts, like a fire district by state statute, are limited to property tax. They can't raise a sales tax. You know, and I'm not aware of Rancho Adobe having some sort of special legislative action to do that, so that's the deal with that. They're, they're, because they're, they're property secured, they protect property, so it's a property-secured district in terms of tax revenue.
Very good. All right, if we have no more questions, then we will move on to supplemental information received after the agenda was posted. Do we have anything new or extra?
I want to ask you a question.
Have that. All right, with that, then we are to item 19, adjournment at 10:40, 48.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. We'll call it 48. Thank you, everybody. We look forward to seeing you next time.